Welcome to the. Welcome to the Portola Valley Planning Commission meeting for June 15, 2022. Gavel, gavel, gavel. We'll get started. Let's just start with a roll call.
Commissioner Haskell? Here. Commissioner Tark?
President.
Commissioner Taylor?
President.
Our vice chair Goulden will be absent this evening. Chair Koff still.
Here. Great. So we have one topic on the agenda tonight, which is a review of the draft housing element that will go to town council and then potentially to the state for review. So we'll take comments from the public now in the open portion, but it's not if it's about the housing element. Hold on to your comments. We'll have a chance for that later. So right now is for people that have a comment that is not about the housing element. I see Dana Green, I guess. See, go ahead, Dana. Is somebody letting her unmute?
Okay, there we go.
Great.
Unmute.
We can hear you, Dana.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, esteemed planning commission. I hope that you have all received and read the letter that I wrote to you yesterday. I had surgery today and I'm not sure how long I can hang out this evening, but I'd like my comment to infuse your thinking as you review the first element. You guys like me and all other in our town government took an oath and a pledge to uphold and defend the general plan. It has always been like a North Star for me. Whatever is the outcome of all of this, please do write by the legacy of our gorgeous plan. This is my letter that I wrote to you. As you all know, our general plan is internally consistent. This draft housing element gives us an idea of what changes may take place. They're substantial. The town chose to begin with the housing element and then move to safety element, which is being drafted without resident participation and crafting. Ostensibly, we can't predict what implications are to the safety element until the housing element is finalized. Residents would like the planning commission to articulate what changes and implications they see occurring to the remaining elements of the general plan, i.e. land use, circulation, conservation, all of them, because no doubt the entire general plan will need changing. And perhaps that was the point of all of this. Adding 20% of our current population with no planned infrastructure is challenging. I'd like to hear what you PC feel will ultimately need to happen to our wonderful document to make it internally consistent again after the housing element is approved. What does that mean to the general plan? And I, as you go along and do this work, I would like specifics. And if you need more time, please hit the pause button for some time. As always, respectfully yours, Dana. Thank you, you guys.
Thanks, Dana. Although I, let me emphasize, we, if it's about the housing element, we'll have time for that later.
It's about all of it.
Yeah, but.
The whole plan. Thanks.
Does anyone have comments that are not about the housing element that they would like to bring to the attention of the planning commission? Okay. Oh, no, I see Rita Gomez, Whitney. Oh, I forgot to mention, we're gonna, we have a timer for both this section and the later sections of three minutes for each resident. So I hope you all can see the timer when it starts so that you'll know when it's going to end. Go ahead, Rita Gomez, Whitney.
Thank you. As I'm watching my bandwidth being severely low, I just want to bring up the conversation once again about infrastructure in our town. We were doing all these planning for building, but I don't still see a plan for increasing our infrastructure. There hasn't been an undergrounding meeting in some time. You know, there's no coordinated effort and perhaps the town with the new positions that are being created, you know, that were presented in the budget, can have someone that will do a safety element and that person can coordinate with the utility companies when we do have outages or barely one and a half bars for our internet that we share in this lovely town. So thank you for thinking ahead of the infrastructure sewer, you phone, electricity, gas, and all of those other issues as we are trying to plan for these new residents in town. Please don't forget the old residents in town.
Thanks, Rita. Next is Kristy Corley.
Yes, thank you. I just know that we all have three minutes to talk and I felt cut off during my comments, especially from the minutes from the last meeting. I was cut off at a minute and 38 seconds and I thought what I was saying was related. So I'm just asking that you really let us have our three minutes because we have comments to say. I do care about the bike and pedestrians in this town and traffic. And looking closely at what happens when we add housing, how can we do the best job we can do with traffic accidents, bike accidents, pedestrian. I'd like to see the sheriff reports in the B, the bike committee. Sometimes they're not producing the reports and I think they need to attend every meeting since that's our largest contract. We care about not seeing accidents in the future. And I'd like to also comment that people going straight down Golden Oak into Alpine Swim and Tennis, there wasn't two accidents in the last two years and I think traffic should be looked at closer. Thank you.
Thanks, Kristy. Next is David Cardinal.
Hi. Addressing, thinking about the issue of infrastructure, I, I think one of the things we should talk about is that we have the best infrastructure along the corridors. We have fiber optic, we have sewers, we have electricity. And I think that's something to consider. As far as, you know, the concern about landlines, people aren't even selling those anymore. You can't buy them. As far as cell towers, frankly, we have been kind of NIMBY about not wanting them built here. So more of them and more battery backups would be great. So I, I do think we need to look carefully at our infrastructure, but we also need to think about where we put our housing in terms of where our infrastructure is really good versus where it's not so good, like our house, which gets no cell reception whatsoever. But thank you.
Great. Thanks, Steve. Angela Hayes next.
Okay, unmuted. I would like to say that I think we ought to just have a quick look through the circulation element and see how it is changed before we submit our general plan because the impact of houses, it's not just the impact of houses, the impact of mountain bikes and changes since the last general plan was written. And this has impact on our trails and I do think it would be worth having at least one meeting to go through it.
Great. Thank you, Angela. Okay, I see no more hands. So will Laura, is it appropriate to turn it over to you for a staff report?
Yes, that would be great. Thank you. Just a second while I pull up my materials. Okay, does that look okay to everybody?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks. Good evening. Chair Koff still, members of the planning commission, members of the public. And for anyone that doesn't know me, I'm Laura Russell, planning and building director. I'm joined this evening by Akari Silver, town attorney, Dylan Perker from our planning team and our consultant planners Curtis and Carla from Urban Planning Partners. So tonight I'm going to give a presentation that gives some background on the housing element process to date. Talks a little bit about the policies and then some of the next steps. And then we'll be looking forward to public comment and planning commission feedback. So if anyone's new, the format of these meetings is this staff presentation that I'm giving. And then there are questions from the commissioners, clarifying questions for the staff and consultant team. And then there's public comments and then that's followed by commission discussion. Hold on just a second while I shut my window. It just got noisy at my house. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so the purpose of the meeting, as I mentioned, is for us to present the draft housing element, in particular, the aspects of it that are related to policy changes. And so we're hoping to focus primarily on section six, which is related to sites for housing and section seven, which is the goals, policies and programs. And so the people are aware process wise, there'll be council, town council and public review. We'll be making edits and incorporating those into a draft housing element that will be submitted to HCD, which is the State Department of Housing and Community Development for their review. So this is just very brief background for anyone that's new to this conversation. The housing element is a part of the general plan. It identifies policies and programs to meet the housing needs of the town. We update it every eight years now under state law. This update is for the time period of 2023 to 2031 and that's referred to as the sixth cycle. So if you hear people talking about the fifth cycle, that's the one we're in now and completing and we are planning for the sixth cycle that starts next year. These are the required housing element components that you've all seen before, just with bold on the housing sites inventory and the policies and programs, because that's where we're going to have most of our discussion. Here's a reminder of the town's arena, our regional housing needs allocation. As a reminder, this is by income category. We're required to plan for all of the different income categories, very low income, low income, moderate and above moderate. And those have definitions that come from state law and are implemented in every county in California. Here's a reminder of the income levels specifically for San Mateo County. These get updated every year. So what qualifies as very low income, for example, is one person that makes about $64,000 a year or about $91,000 for a family of four. Kind of the upper end is moderate income. You had a family of four that makes up to $209,000 approximately. You would still be considered a moderate income person and qualify for affordable housing. So in our area, this includes most people in education, many people in healthcare, many people in recreation, the arts and most government workers as well. So as the planning commission is aware, the town council appointed a housing element committee to do a lot of the heavy lifting and a lot of the work related to developing the housing element. So they were formed to provide recommendations into the planning commission and council process, looking to explore options to minimize the impacts of additional housing units, maximizing public participation and making sure that there's communication throughout the process. So that committee, the ad hoc housing element committee members include representatives, two from town council, two from this planning commission, one from race and equity and one from the architectural insight control commission. And then community members make up the rest up to 15. The committees met 12 times in August of 2021 and those meetings have been incredibly well attended. Even having these numbers for a very large city would be remarkable. It really speaks to the level of involvement and the deep, deep ethos that the town has around community participation and planning its own future. So we've had typical attendance around 40 and 50 people and a couple of key meetings related to sites. We had up to and over 160 attendees on Zoom. We've also held two community meetings on October 14th, where we talked about big picture topics. And on May 9th, where we focused mostly on housing sites and on ADUs. There's a summary available in the staff report that kind of talks about the key points of each of those meetings. We've also held two meetings that are the committee of committees and those have been really excellent meetings and got really good feedback from members of those different committees. And there'll be another one of those later in the process. And their feedback was transmitted to the ad hoc committee by the chair Judith Murphy. She gave a report out each time on the highlights of those meetings. Throughout the process, we've been using the website, social media and the town's event notification system has over 450 subscribers. So, you know, about 10% of the population has been getting regular email notifications on this process. We also, of course, post the P D forum. So I wanted to talk about some of the big picture things that we learned and what we heard from the ad hoc committee and from the public so far in the course of this process, kind of higher level themes. We really heard from the committee that the community is really interested in producing real affordable housing, that there be a result of affordable housing being constructed. We learned that ADUs alone won't be enough to satisfy arena and get our housing elements certified by the state. We talked quite a bit about equity and fair housing and how those things are important. We really learned that using town owned property makes affordable housing more feasible and is a really important resource for these types of projects because they're so expensive to build. There was a lot of discomfort from the committee and from members of the public related to upzoning single family homes if the owners didn't want to. This is different than what happens in many communities in California. It's very typical for single family homes to be upzoned as part of a housing element process. But when that was proposed here, there was a strong reaction that the community was not comfortable doing that. There was, as always, a lot of conversation about rural character, but we also learned that that means different things to different people. So this is a lot about balancing different priorities and reasonable people disagree on some of these topics. And then we really emphasize thinking about safety first. Geologic safety, fire safety, and then trying to spread the units throughout the community if it's feasible after looking at those safety considerations. So what the committee brought together, I think of as a patchwork approach. There's no one single answer, but it takes multiple programs to bring this together. So that includes the site inventory, which is the specific locations where we're talking about accommodating more housing. And that's where the plan proposes to increase density and we'll talk more about that. Affiliated housing sites, the committee talked about this and wanted to retain and expand that existing program instead of just capturing it with different zoning. We thought that we should build on the success of the past program. Something that's new and gotten a lot of discussion is the opt-in upzoning program. The committee talked about many different versions of this. So you might have heard different things along the way. So I'll just go over the main highlights of what's currently proposed for your consideration. But it allows, it would allow property owners to develop up to four units per acre, the way that it's written right now in the draft plan. And then continuing to rely on ADUs and junior ADUs as a very important part of the housing strategy in town as it has been our main housing strategy for the past housing element cycles. So if you're interested in hearing all of the information, I know planning commissioners are very diligent and you probably read and watched a lot of these materials in preparation. But there's a whole series of meetings that the committee held related to the sites inventory. I'll highlight on February 28th, there was a big change in approach. I call it the big pivot where the community and the committee was not really happy with the direction that it was going in. So the committee generated new ideas and we revisited some old ideas and then brought new analysis forward in April and in May to try to pin some of those new strategies down and see how they were coming together. And then last on May 24th, there was a decision based on consensus and actually in this case a vote of the committee to maintain the level of ADUs that are currently proposed in the draft plan, that's 92. They had conversations about exactly which sites should be included at what density level. And then there was a revision to the opt-in strategy to make it potentially less impactful. So here is a map that was included in the packet. I wanted the planning commission to have the benefit of just seeing the hazard constraints map and the sites in one place. And so these maps were something that the housing element committee worked with quite a bit to try to understand the safety considerations in town. And so we mapped a series of different potential hazards that were based on guidance for what you would do for a safety element. So this is drawing on our safety element work and for our unique characteristics. So there's all the different layers are in gray and they include the floods, flood zones, the ground potential map that we normally look at with the least stable soils, the major faults, slopes greater than 30%, that's important for fire safety and fire spread. And also an evacuation map showing the areas in town that only had one point of ingress or egress. So darker gray indicates that there's more than one hazard on any given property. Important to note, though, that presence of one hazard doesn't necessarily mean that there can't be development on that site, but it depends on what type of hazard it is and what portion of the site it takes up and what kind of development would be proposed. So what we're going to do is just zoom in on this a little bit and I'm just going to talk you through these sites and so that we can make sure everybody feels familiar with them. Let me just lots of notes. So starting in the northwest corner of the town, we've got that little, it's a little pink dot right at the top and that's Ladera Church. The main part of the church is located in the county on the other side of the town boundary, but they have owned this property and been interested in considering housing there for quite a while. And we told them to wait for this housing element process. They've been waiting about, I would say, two years or maybe a little bit more than that to be able to participate in this process. So they're interested and just continuing to investigate this. So this site is proposed for the highest density that we have in the plan, which is 20 units per acre, which is known as the default density for our community. So that's the density at which the state assumes that affordable housing is going to be feasible. Then across the street from that is the Ford Field site that you're all familiar with. In the plan, the field and the parking lot would remain. And then affordable housing could be developed on the remainder of that site. It's also proposed to be the, the developable portion of it is proposed to be zoned at 50 units per acre. It's about two and a half acres. And so.
I'm sorry, Laura, 20 units per acre, right?
I'm sorry. Yeah. What did, I'm sorry.
Fifty units per acre, but 20 units per acre times two and a half.
Thank you, Ann. That is a very big difference. Yeah, 20 units per acre resulting in 50 units total. And I want to point out at this site, since the town owns it, there would not be the possibility of increasing the density using state density bonus because the town, as the property owner could say, we are not interested in using density bonus at that location. So that location is identified in the plan as a place to do an affordable housing development. And we've done some feasibility studies and that's included in the plan. Those are not a set plan. They're just to demonstrate that it is feasible to do affordable housing at that site. Then moving down Alpine Road a little bit, the Stanford Wedge project is shown in green. And that is a pending project that's included in the housing element. And then there's Glen Oaks, which is across the street from that. And so for perspective in terms of how development may occur in the future, the Stanford Wedge pending project is on the northernmost kind of triangular shape of the lot. And then the Glen Oaks proposed site would be at the lower, the southern portion of Glen Oaks is kind of a B shape. Would probably be, be as in boy within that lower B shape if development were to occur there. There's a creek which is limiting and there's different, you know, different conditions related to that creek and habitat and things like that that we need to look out for. So that would all have to be studied more, but that's identified as a location for eight units per acre potentially in the developable portion of it, not for the whole site. And that results in what we're planning on, if that location is 29 units is in the housing inventory right now. Then going down Alpine into the middle of town, there's three sites that are identified there. The first one is 4370 Alpine Road and that's the triangular kind of shaped lot on Nathwurst. If you're familiar with it, there's a creek that runs through it. So it kind of functions like two separate pieces, each with their own driveway. So right now, this is the only property that's identified for mixed use type of development. And so that could be up to six dwelling units per acre and they could continue to have commercial uses there. So that was after much discussion where the committee landed. If people are interested, there's a feasibility analysis, which with quite a bit more intensity of development to just show what might be possible. But what the committee landed on was lower intensity around at six units per acre. Then next to that in green is the Willow Commons Pipeline Project. This is getting ready to go into construction so we can count those units as it was part of the state law. There's a window to be able to do that. And then the site next to it is 4395 Alpine Road. This is a vacant site between Willow Commons and Roberts Market. It's in common ownership as the Willow Commons project. The committee discussed this quite a bit in different densities at this location. And what the committee landed on for this site is 20 units per acre. So it also meets the default density. There was lots of conversation about whether it should be higher or lower and a lot of conversation about the intensity of development in the Nathwurst Triangle area. There was another site that was under consideration, which was the parking lot behind Roberts and the committee elected to remove that because they thought the intensity of the development in this area would be too much, including that. And then kind of going over to the other side of town, you're all familiar with the Sequoia site. This shows you, there's a gray line that goes through the pink area of the Sequoias and that's the fault. And so the Sequoias has been doing quite a bit of work related to geotechnical feasibility. And their geologist has been working with the town geologists and they've been doing some study. And they have identified two potential places on the site that could work for additional housing and they've started conversations with the residents. And they're also looking into the future. They might need to do more infrastructure upgrades to kind of bring them into the future. But for now, what we have included is the latest information from the Sequoias, which is the potential for 18 senior units and five workforce housing units between those two sites on their property. And then finally, we have Christ Church, which is located right next to town hall. You may be aware that they have the daycare that's accessed from the back and then there's a parking lot in the back right before you get to the, to the open space behind there. And they have been interested also for a couple of years and potentially building some housing. There are another location where it would be part of their mission as part of the church to be able to provide housing to people. So they may have some workers that would want to live there, but they would want some of those units to be available to others as well. So here's the site summary. And I want to point out, if you have the housing element in front of you, there's also an even more detailed table on page 99 with the same, like with the sites that includes the density and some of the different changes. But I wanted to give you something that kind of captures the overall and so we can look at the numbers. So our arena is across the top and then under. And then um under land resources, we have pipeline and pending projects. That includes Stanford and Willow Commons. That's what's included there, even though Stanford's not approved, um we're counting it because we're allowed to. Um and then projected ADU development. Um the number that the committee landed on is ninety-two units. And that is spread across the income categories according to a formula that's kind of like a safe harbor. Um so we can make assumptions about how to allocate those. Then the Ford Field Site is fifty units, um then the. Next is the one on Alpine for twenty-three Glen Oaks. We talked about, you know, each of these sites I just went through. Then affiliated housing, Sequoias, Christ Church, and Modera. And then the opt-in rezoning program, I'm gonna talk some more about. We've got assigned to twelve units here. And so that gives us a buffer of mathematically, they all turned out to be twenty-one percent. We were aiming for twenty percent buffer for all of these. Um it's a little bit of a puzzle to put the numbers together. But um the state guidelines recommend a buffer um between fifteen and thirty percent, and twenty is really a very common best practice. So talking about the affiliated housing program, um we talked about whether we should retain it. Or maybe kind of change some of the zoning and just upzone some of those sites. And there was a feeling that we should um keep the program and expand it, and that it works really well to serve the workers that already um serve the community. And so what we propose here is to add details to the municipal code. Right now, the affiliated housing program is only in the housing element. It's not in the code. So we wanna provide more clarity and more structure to it. The new partners that we're bringing in when this housing element would be include Ladera Church and Christ Church that we just talked about. And then future new partners could be added by the town council um by a resolution after review by the planning commission. So that's what would happen in the future if someone else wanted to join. And a meaningful change in the program that I wanna make sure the planning commission is clear on. Right now, affiliated housing is only allowed for employees of that particular institution on their own property. The new version of the program that's proposed would remove that requirement. It would still target the town's workforce, but it would allow people to, for example, um. Live at Sequoias and work at the Priory, um or vice versa. Or if one of the churches had um their employees living in two units, then maybe they would make available for rent to more units. And um have a preference program for people who live or work in town. Next is the up zoning program, and so this is where we landed after much discussion. It would allow um up to four units per acre on lots that are one acre or greater in size. Would be subject to safety criteria that would be reviewed by the planning commission. So they'd make an application to the planning commission to be brought into the program. So the safety criteria is similar to the hazard map that we were talking about earlier. So accessible to two ways in or out, not located on the slope um of uh thirty percent or more. Outside of a very high fire severity zone. And I wanna emphasize that um new maps are gonna be produced by Woodside Fire Protection District and or Cal Fire. Um in the coming year. And so if those, when those maps are adopted, then this would apply um to those new maps as well. And then make sure it's outside of a fault zone and outside of areas identified for unstable soils or at-risk landslides. So we would take this basic criteria and develop it more in the municipal code so that it could be more um. It would be something we could interpret, and there'd be more of a standard. And then once if the planning commission brought the site into the program through that application, then ASCC would review the project for objective design standards. For the actual design of the project. And I wanted to note too that um we're interested in working on like a sunset or a limitation for this program. So we think that it's possible. We haven't worked out the technical aspect of it yet. But the gist of it would be if we are meeting our arena numbers, then this provision would sunset. And it wouldn't um continue on into the future. So a lot of people are talking about this opt-in program, and I got a lot of questions that said, wait, is that the same as SB nine? Is that different? How is it different? How do I think about it? So this is just a quick reminder um about what SB nine says. And how it's implemented for us in town. So just assuming a lot size of less than three point five acres, making it a little easy. Um under SB nine, we can have a primary house that's limited by the adjusted maximum floor area, AMFA. That may include a five hundred square foot J eighty. Then you can have an ADU, and if it's a new ADU and it's detached. It can exceed the AMFA by eight hundred square feet, and it can have four foot side and rear setbacks. Then you can have an SB nine unit attached or detached. It can also exceed AMFA by eight hundred square feet, and it can also have four foot side and rear setbacks. But SB nine is always limited in our code to four units per site. So never more than four, but can exceed floor area and can have as low as four foot setbacks. So different than the opt-in program, which is drafted as four units per acre. So larger sites could have more than four units. But we could set standards related to their floor area, and perhaps most importantly, we could set setbacks. Um that are the larger setbacks that we prefer to see in the community. So the opt-in program could potentially be viewed as kind of an alternative to SB nine. It's kind of taking the state laws um attempts to increase the diversity of housing types. And make it more appropriate to town where our setbacks are very important. For fire safety, for wildlife, for views, for quality of life. So we went to our um consultant that did some feasibility studies for us. Um and so I wanna emphasize, this is just an example. This is not a done deal. This is an exploration that we just wanted to share uh with the planning commission and with the public. So we just took a test site. We just grabbed a site that, you know what I mean? We thought we'd just see how this works. Um so this site is one point six one acres. We assumed a front setback of fifty feet. And we assumed side and rear setbacks of thirty feet. Um and so this includes um six cottages. Um this is three point seven dwelling units per acre. This assumes that they would be two stories or um like the upper story would be a small second story. Kind of fitting within the roof, so it didn't look as tall. They could each have, you know, a small porch. They would have a private access drive in this example. This example has carport at the rear. Um and some walkways and kind of some shared space between them. These units are approximately eighteen fifty square feet, so still um pretty big. Um cottages could certainly be smaller than that and be effective, um you know, for different um household sizes. And then just showing, you know, you could still have planted areas. Um you know, perhaps in this community, depending on the lot, it would be better to um group these units even closer together. And maintain more of the open space. Um but we wanted to model something that felt kind of like a worst-case scenario. So that people could understand um the implications of this kind of policy. In this case, the driveway goes around to the back, and there's a fire truck turnaround um in the back area. Here's another example on the same test lot with the same setbacks. Um this shows three duplex buildings, so this is six units. Um each of those duplexes are two stories. And each unit has about sixteen eighty square feet, um that excludes the garage. And would have two um, excuse me, private um attached two-car garage in each unit. So this is just showing like you could have a shared garden or play area. You could um have walkways that go in between. Um that same kind of scenario with a fire truck turnaround at the back, so only one, one driveway, and people would have access to their individual garages. So this is just another example of how the opt-in program um might work. And if we decide that, you know, the the committee and the planning commission and community want to go with this option. Then we would be writing really specific zoning standards and development standards so that we could regulate how this would look. So maybe we would regulate it to kind of look more like our existing pattern. Maybe we could have a something that looks like a main house that could have two or three units in it and a couple smaller outbuildings. Or maybe something like this with three duplexes um on the property. So these are ideas um to give you a sense of what would kind of a, kind of a maximum type of build out be on a one and a half acre lot. So for ADUs, I wanted to um hit on some key, key aspects of that. This is um an important part of the town's strategy. There was lots of discussion about ADUs with the committee. So some of the thoughts that came up is that maybe ADUs are not real affordable housing. They're left open or they're used for other things. Um but on the flip side, once they exist, they can be used differently depending on the needs of that household and who the owners are at this time. The committee was not comfortable relying only on ADUs to meet the affordable housing requirements since those variables are in place. Um but there's a lot of discussion in the committee similar to what the planning commission has had. When you've been talking about ADUs, about how they're important for multi-generational households. Persons with disabilities, diverse household composition. And without ADUs, those people would be looking for housing in the market, and it would be really hard for them to find. And then something important we learned through all of this is that a lot of people don't know about junior accessory dwelling units. Um it's relatively new that we've really talked about them specifically in our code. And the committee and the public really got behind um J eighty news and thought they're more naturally affordable. They're smaller, they use existing space, so this would be a really good thing to encourage. So how do we figure out how many ADUs to count? Um HCD provides a formula for how ADUs should be projected, and it's really conservative. Um they want you to take the last three years average, and that's it, and then you project that number into the future. And then they said, well, you can increase it a little bit, but you need to have a lot of support for that assumption. So the committee talked about this a lot, um and ultimately recommended ninety-two units. Um that's what's in the draft housing element now. This reflects their recent increase in the number of ADU applications that we've had. And an increase that we think would happen with the additional programs that are included in section seven. I wanna point out, though, there is some risk to this approach. Um HCD may not allow um this high number in the final housing element, so it is possible that we'll have to go to other strategies. Uh in order to be certified. But we think that with the programs that we have, this is a reasonable number to start with. So now I wanna turn to just some policy and program highlights and some areas that I haven't talked about yet. So just some things to note, and these refer to the program numbers that are within the housing element. So I wanna make sure the planning commission's clear. We're talking about creating two new zoning districts that would allow multifamily housing. Um one would be at twenty units per acre. That's referred to as the default density. The other one would be at eight units per acre. We're also talking about creating a new mixed-use residential district that would allow six units per acre and still some commercial development. We are um in the draft plan. We have a project at Ford Field that would be in collaboration with an affordable housing developer. Um so it would be something where we would release something similar to a request for proposals. Find an affordable housing developer and work with them on the details of the design. Um ensure the quality, talk about the programs, the unit composition, and how that kind of project could go forward. From our constraints analysis, we identified that we have um some improvement we can make related to our standards or development standards. And our process to reduce uncertainty. So we've got programs related to updating those standards, updating our handouts. Looking for staffing pattern and fees and things like that. And then related to wildfire resiliency, um we pulled some best practices um from other communities um that and. Uh there's a regional effort going on related to this, so we've been very involved in that. So some of the programs related to that are to review the building code every three years. And see if we can make any improvements related to, we've been calling it home ordnance. Um but make that part of our regular code update process, so we do it every three years. We would update our landscaping regulations to look at both fire safety and water usage, um looking ahead for resiliency. We would review and adopt as appropriate the fire hazard maps that are being developed by the fire district and or Cal Fire, depending on how those evolved. And then going back and looking at the ADU and the SB nine ordinances and make sure they're consistent with the fire hazard maps. So we may want to revisit those, and depending on if we've got enough evidence in the record um to support it with HCD. See if we can come up with appropriate um fire safety locations where it's not appropriate to build ADUs or SB nine. Um units. So where are we? What's happening now? The committee's been meeting for a long time. The draft housing element is available online for tollavalle dot net slash housing element. The town committees were also invited to talk about the housing element kind of during the same month-long period and make and provide comments. And then at the end of the thirty-day comment period, um staff's gonna compile those comments from the public, from the planning commission. With the housing element committee and give all those to town council for their consideration. Then we incorporate all those edits and submit to HCD for initial review. Um that takes three months, and so we anticipate having comments back in mid-October. Then we get all those comments back, go back to the housing element committee, um make a few changes. Uh talk about the what broader community, back to the planning commission and back to the council. So how does this fit in? Kind of what happens next? Um this summer, the staff and consultant team um will be working on the zoning code amendments that implement the draft housing element. And this was on purpose for two reasons, and the council wanted us to work on the zoning changes at the same time. Because it maintains more local control. And we also wanted to do it at the same time so that people can better understand what these housing element policies would mean. Because we would have code language that supports it, so it would be go together as a package and reduce uncertainty for the community. So those proposed zoning amendments will go first to the ad hoc housing element committee to kind of make sure that they fit with the committee had in mind. And then they'll come as a planning commission for fine-tuning um that you do with all of your experience and expertise on the actual code language. And worthwhile to note that the Analysis Center CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act, has begun. Um and these initials are very CEQA, you know, language. ISMD means Initial Study Mitigated Negative Declaration. So that's the kind of document that we are working on right now, and that will be available later this year. And so that'll be part of the package that the planning commissioner will see. And then uh to Dana's question during oral communications, um we do have to look at the other areas of the general plan. Um for consistency, there are obvious areas like the land use element and the map that we'll need to change. And then there are less obvious areas, as um the residents have already pointed out, that we'll need to go through and look at for consistency. So in order to adopt the housing element, we will have to make some amendments to other parts of the general. So staff recommends that the planning commission focus on the main policy areas. But of course, other comments and discussion are certainly welcome. We just know it's a lot to manage. And your particular expertise is especially helpful uh in those major policy points. And then if you have detailed comments like typos or little mistakes or corrections. Um we'd be happy to receive those offline if that's helpful um to the discussion. So that brings us to the end of my presentation. Um we'd be very happy to try to answer your questions and really look forward to the comments from the planning commission and the public. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Laura. Very good. Okay, planning commissioners, um would anyone like to go first with their questions for Laura? How about you, Judith? You, you've got your questions ready?
Thanks.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, very good.
Okay, thanks. Um. All right, uh I have some general questions. Uh there is a statement in the draft housing element. That the town has reviewed the other elements of the general plan and determined that the housing element is not consistent with the other elements. Is that before or after? Like, are we saying today it's not consistent? Or is that if this element is adopted, it will then not be consistent? It's a bit confusing.
Thank you. Good point. That's the language. Some of the language we're trying to project into the future, do you know what I mean? And maybe we didn't write that as well as we could. So certainly the intent is all elements will be reviewed. And then if other elements need to be amended, then that will all happen at once. So then everything would be consistent.
Okay, okay. So there's not a general sentiment right now that we should be aware of that today. We have major inconsistencies because. Yeah, I just want to make sure we know what the starting point is.
Oh, thank you. The the starting point is there's meaningful difference in the land use element for sure. Because the land use element identifies only single-family land uses, only single-family classifications. So there's definitely meaningful difference there. It's not consistent with the current land use element and the others we'd have to look at.
Okay. And we're doing the housing element first. Well, I know we have this deadline, obviously, and that's why we're here, but is there some other? Reason, I mean, other than bandwidth of the town staff, which I do understand. For not progressing other elements in parallel, because it is going to be hard to be tracking what's changing as information involves. On the rest. So if I could just have a framework for how to think about the other pieces of the general plan, timing-wise.
So about three and a half years ago, we started talking about the comprehensive general plan amendment. And we talked about it a couple of times with the council, and there was a lot of hesitation. At that time around doing it and quite a bit of discomfort about that idea. And so we we came up with a very light approach to start with. And we were really just about to get going with that when it started to be pandemic time. And then at the same time, we were realizing that our RENA allocation was going to be very high. And so it really became the priority to focus on meeting the housing obligation. And working on the safety element. As being the kind of priority projects instead of trying to look at the general plan comprehensively at the same time.
Okay. And so the safety element, fire hazard. Element. I I, there's been so much to follow. I know you guys have spent hundreds of hours on all of this. When? Is the next inflection point for that piece of it? Because to me, they. They're going to feed back on each other, right?
Hmm. Okay, so let me take it in a couple pieces. It's complicated, so let me try to explain that to me, the important piece is. We have all been waiting for years for CAL FIRE to finish their fire hazard mapping. The rumor is they're close, but we were all hoping we'd have it by now. We do not. The fire district stepped up and decided that they wanted to do their own mapping and their own, what's called a hazard and risk assessment. And so they've been working really diligently. I think some materials were forwarded to you by a member of the public. To advance that. And so they're getting ready to choose a consultant to do their own fire hazard mapping. And so when that becomes available, then the town would look at that. And compare it to everything we have and look at all of our existing policies. And then what the safety element is doing in the meantime. Is we're looking at our available resources, so the existing mapping that we have. And anticipating the future mapping and the future hazard and risk assessment. So what we did for the housing element is try to bring the best things, the best information we had together at the time. We had that big fire safety meeting with the housing element committee. And we got recommendations from our fire safety consultant, Zeke Lender. And then we also looked at these sites in light of what we had learned. And we're going to be surprised if the housing sites end up having to change because of the. Mapping, the new mapping that's going to come out. So we've really tried to think about sites that will work regardless. But there is a chance if the result of that mapping turns out to be very different than what we expect. Then we would have to double back and redo that portion of the work. But we didn't have the option to slow down on the housing element to wait for those maps to come out in light of the state timeline.
Okay, okay. Thanks. That's really helpful. The ADU numbers, you said it's an average of the last three years. Is that literally what you used to come up with ninety-two? Sorry if you were already covering this.
So the, if we take the average according to the formula, like that HCD wants us to use. You only get to sixty-two units, only sixty. We originally had a number around eighty because we thought that was something we could justify. With the changes in the state law and our increased numbers. And then the committee felt like we should increase it some more. So there was discussion about the right level, and then this is where they landed.
Okay, okay, great. Robert's parking lot was taken off. Do you recall the number of units that were possibly going to go there?
Um, we've got it in the materials. We could get the answer to the question. We studied it at twenty units per acre. So I would say our model shows in the low twenties of units that could fit there.
Okay. Here is. Okay, so from my perspective, I'm trying to understand if you zone for twenty per acre, not there, but just anywhere. How does the density bonus work? Because you said if the town owns it, you can elect not to take advantage of it, but if. You know, that's not the case. How, I mean, I assume the density can go up from the zone or not? Let let me know how to think about that.
It can. Density bonus would still come into play for any privately owned sites. So they could, so the amount that you can increase the density is that, you know, sliding scale based on the level of affordability.
Yeah. And we're not allowed to take those increased numbers into account when we calculate RENA?
We are not allowed to.
That seems really. Inconsistent, right?
It does, yes.
That, that just seems. Like they're sandbagging us with, you know, needing to find. Possibly a lot more because some of these density bonuses are quite significant. Okay.
If if I may, there is a possibility, some certain sites. If you can justify that it's very likely that that site will develop at the density bonus level. And if there has been a history of density bonus projects in the town. It may be possible to do that. But we, the way we have analyzed it currently, we really have only had one density bonus project move forward. And that's the Willow Commons, and it was a very unique project. So it's difficult for us to really make the argument that density bonus will be taken advantage of. With the particular sites we have identified. And there's also an economic aspect of that as well. You know, smaller projects do not always result in increased density bonus units. It's the larger projects, the two hundred units that are more likely to to take advantage of density bonus law.
Although we're. Are we seeing some of that with Stanford or not? Just remind me.
Yes, yes, we are. But that's because of the the town's fifteen percent. Inclusionary housing ordinance in connection with the subdivision map act. And it's a, you know, it's a small number of of density bonus units.
But meaning meaningful in a town with arena number is two fifty-three potentially. But that's, that's fine. That's a really helpful explanation because that is particularly confusing. The affiliated housing are, now that they could share housing across. The entities like Sequoias and, you know, the priory. Are they comfortable with that? Did they comment positively on that opportunity?
Um, we heard different things from different people. And that would be an optional aspect of it. So if the priory wanted to continue to serve their employees, they could. But an example we got from the priory is their staff can live there, but their custodians can't. Because their custodians are contract, not employees of the priory. So their own custodians can't live on the campus. So that would allow those types of things. And then the two churches. Said that they actually wish to be able to rent some units to other people that don't work for them particularly.
Okay, okay. So at least some level of interest. Okay, thank you. I think that exhausts my questions for now. Oh, one question on Ford Field, if that's the the one that has the highest density. Is there a point which? What what number is required to meet the efficiency or the economic efficiency there? Did anyone do any analysis on that yet? Because you said fifty. But does forty not make it? Do we, do we have a sense of that?
Yeah, we met with an affordable housing developer, Alta Housing, which is formerly Palo Alto Housing Corporation. And they advised that fifty is kind of the magic number from a construction, financing and operations point of view. So that's the number we used. We also, we just are getting some new guidance coming out from twenty-one elements related to this. That is is going to be out soon, so we can check those assumptions with them also. But that is our working understanding right now is about fifty is what it what it takes.
Okay, thank you. I think I'll turn it over to my colleagues. Thank you.
Great. Thanks Judith. Great questions as always. Let's see, Craig, you want to go next?
Sure. So yeah, I have a bunch of questions in no particular order. I was kind of, I'm surprised that the ADU numbers are measured over the last three years, given we've had two years of COVID. That seems like a pretty unreasonable way to calculate a number. So. I'm glad to see you guys went over and above. But it also seems like that would be a pretty reasonable argument for going over and above. You know, because as I understood it, you you need to come up with a justification. So I'm, I'm hoping that we continue to sort of push on that. Because it seems like ADUs, particularly JADUs, are kind of our best bet in terms of the least amount of impact for the most amount of gain. In terms of fire maps and stuff, I was curious. Whether, you know, what fire maps are we using now that are, I mean, that we've legally adopted? Do we have that someplace? And then what are the impacts that we're likely to see from the fire map changes? I mean, you were saying for at least some of the stuff that you're looking at, you sort of position them in places where you didn't think that the fire map changes would make a difference. But certainly if we start doing like opt-in, I'm thinking that stuff. Since it's potentially all over town, some of these maps are going to impact that kind of stuff. So I mean, what what are the likely things that would be impacted by changes in the fire maps?
Okay, so backing up, which maps do we have now? We have the existing, yeah, CAL FIRE, very high fire severity map. Which was officially not adopted by the town at the time, but still provides guidance for many things, right? Even though it was not formally adopted. So we looked at that. The town has the Moritz map. So that's older but has good information. So that's a source of information. And then Zeke Lender, our consultant in this area. Did his own sort of mapping and wrote a memo that talked about what he thought the issues with the highest. Fires, like the highest fire safety issues. And he identified particularly slopes greater than twenty, but definitely over thirty percent. And he identified like the canyon locations where there's locations where we couldn't do sufficient vegetation management. And so he pointed out to the committee in a live mapping session, some of those things that he was looking at. So the committee had that as kind of the background information for their deliberations and conversation. So now moving forward.
Wait, just, do we have any officially accepted fire maps? Like anything?
Um, Cara?
Yeah, so we have adopted the Moritz maps as through the safety element. Those are adopted.
That have. Or stability stuff.
I'm sorry, you broke up. Could you, could you repeat that, Craig?
Yeah, I was just asking, is the Moritz map that fired, you know, very high, high, that kind of stuff?
It does. It 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 uses a different terminology than the CAL FIRE maps. So it's slightly different, but in general, it it correlates to to the CAL FIRE map. It's a little bit, it's a little bit more restrictive than the the CAL FIRE map, and it is more. It's more heavily reliant on vegetation as opposed to some of the other factors such as slope and wind and and that type of, that type of thing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then on to the impact part of the question?
Okay, so. What we have proposed, so using the opt-in as the example. Is we included the safety criteria that we have now. So for example, not on a slope over thirty percent. Because we've identified that as a meaningful fire hazard. And then when maps are available and the town adopts something. Then those sites, the language will kick in once a map is adopted. And then if you're in, let's say, the very high fire area, however that's mapped in the future, you would not be eligible for the opt-in.
And is is that the only impact that we we think is the opt-in? Do we think there's other potential impacts? To the proposed housing element? If the if the map comes in. I'm trying to figure out, you know, if the map comes in late in the game, then we're trying to get this thing out. Like, I mean, how much churn are we going to get in this process?
Um, well, I've been joking the whole time. The maps are going to come out when we think we have, we're finished with the housing element. I mean, I that's, I've been banking on it the whole time. So we've had to march forward. We've been very thoughtful, we think, in the committee process. And we think we have sites that will work even when a new map comes out that has many more very high fire severity sites on it. If we're surprised by the maps, we will have to pivot. And decide what that looks like and what process we're going to go back to amend it. It could be in this process of adopting it. And it could be something that the town has to do at a later time, depending on the timing.
Okay, thank you.
If if I may, on that point, the other, I think, impact that we've talked about is the impact on the ADU distribution. So at this point, ADUs are not really concentrated in one particular area. But there's the fire safety exception currently that we have that exempts certain properties. We may have to take a closer look at that exemption once the fire maps come out. And maybe we would go with a a more concentrated. Designation for ADUs.
There is a program that says that when the, you know, when there's fire maps to look at, then look at our ADU and SB nine ordinances and see if those need to be revised.
On sort of minor stuff, and I don't need to go into all the details, I noticed that in the appendix, there often would be one number and in the text. Of the draft element, there would be another. And it was a little hard to tell whether it was because they were slightly different years or whether they were just different numbers. You know, there was like a jobs to worker ratio, and in one place it was like point eight eight and another is like point six nine. Is that stuff all going to get normalized when when we're done? Because it seemed odd to me that, you know, I'd read through the sort of main housing element. And then I start going through the appendices and they seem to be contradicting what's in the housing element, which is usually not the intent of appendices. You know, I'd read through the sort of main um housing element, and then I start going through the appendices, and they seem to be contradicting quotes in the housing element, which is usually not the intent of appendices.
It's not the intent. Um, it was certainly our priority to get the housing element out to people. Um, so everyone could start thinking about it and reading it. And so we've got, we know we have some cleanup to do, and we are very open to receiving. Um, those cleanup items. Um, you know, if if people, if if you're reading it and you catch it anyway, and you want to just mark it and shoot it off to me, however is easiest. Um, for planning commissioners and members of the public.
Yeah, okay, fine. Yeah, I just wasn't sure whether we thought it was all consistent. And I was, it was a language problem or a, the numbers didn't, you know, get sort of propagated properly. So. But yeah, I'll just sort of mark both of them and and kind of get that stuff to you offline.
Great.
Um, so then in terms of affiliate housing partners, um, I noticed that at least on your um map, like the priory wasn't on there.
Oh, um, yeah, the priory wasn't on there because they told us they don't intend to build any units in the eight-year cycle.
Okay.
So they're just not on the site inventory, but they would still be in the affiliated housing program.
Okay, but that's why they weren't on the map.
That's why they were on the map.
Okay, great. Um, and has there been, I mean, I know this is sort of a strange question, but. Is there been any discussion with Mid Penn? I mean, like the Hawthorne Properties got housing on it. Um. You know, is there is there any opportunity for, I don't know, JADUs or anything like that with the the stuff that's there? I mean, is is that? A conversation that's going on at all?
Um, I have not been part of those conversations personally in a couple of years. Um, but Mid Penn does have residential units at some of their properties that some of their staff does live in. Um, there hasn't been any specific proposal for the Hawthorns House area. But they are working on, you may have seen the advertisements, um, working on the trail. Um, program that's going to be proposed there in the future. So it's definitely worth asking them again. I don't think we've asked them for a while.
Okay, because there's kind of two sections, right? There's the historic Hawthorne House on the one end, um, and then there's that, you know, the actual house. Uh, that they were living in, you know, which is up sort of up above Roberts. So there's kind of two areas there that seem like they might be possibilities. So, yeah, it seems like it's worth at least talk, having a conversation with them. Um. So then, in terms of the ADU and and the percentage, like this is a percentage increase based on the last three years, presumably. This is the thing. Do we know what the sort of Woodside and Atherton, what they're going to propose? Just trying to get an understanding of, you know, where we stand relative to neighbors and particularly, you know, places like Woodside, which in some ways should be similar. I mean, they're larger, but they should be sort of similar in kind of ADU production.
I haven't looked um at what either town actually put out. Um, I think both of their housing element drafts just came out. We've been in pretty good communication all along with small towns. Um, last time I looked, their ADU numbers were much higher than ours. Um, Atherton has higher ADU production on a regular basis. Um, but even with that, I think there it's going to be challenging for them to justify their ADU numbers that they're proposing.
Okay, um, and I guess related to that, like, what's the, so the deadline for getting. Something approved by HCD is January first, twenty twenty-three, or is that getting them a plan? And being engaged in the cycle? I mean, wh- where are we exactly in this deadline? And and what happens? Like, if you, if say we're more aggressive with ADUs, and then they come back. You know, I'm trying to just understand, because it seems like we've been like, we got to go, 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 go. And I'm just trying to understand exactly. How hard we're pushing, because we certainly heard a lot of comments about the safety element. Um, and and how we're, I mean, some people feel like we're getting in front of our skis, so to speak. And so I guess I'm trying to understand. How much cushion is there to sort of try to bring these things together?
So, under the law, the um housing element is supposed to be certified in January twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
Then there's um a period after that that they tell us we should not call a grace period. Because it's not supposed to be for us to take more time getting it done.
Right.
But it's supposed to be like that final back and forth with HCD. Um, and basically, no one can, this is me talking, this is not the town attorney talking. No one can sue us during that thirty-day or ninety-day not grace period. Okay, so that it's an opportunity, what other people are doing, kind of going back and forth. Um, in other regions that are ahead of us. It's taken many months for them to get certified. They've been going well beyond. But there was a bunch of state guidance that wasn't out yet. So they were trying to write their housing elements in the dark, interpreting the state law. We have the benefit of that guidance. And so I am hopeful we can get certified with two rounds of review by HCD. And so one would be kind of now, July until October. And then we come back and make some more changes, and then I'm hoping we can get certified um at the very beginning of twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Um, and then the zoning code amendments are a little bit different and have um stronger implications for this. And there's um a lot of detail in the staff report that we presented to council at the March, maybe twenty-third-ish meeting. Um, that includes a lot of this discussion, if you want to kind of get into more nitty-gritty of this. But the zoning code um requirements, if we do not adopt them by January of twenty twenty-three. The zoning code that implements the housing element. We lose certain levels of local control. And it's it's related to the number of units, the density, and the approval process. And so in, we presented that to council and said, is it really important for us to try to make this deadline, or should we take longer? And they thought that because of that implication of losing local control for the zoning, it was important to finish the zoning. So that's another reason why we've been trying to stay on the schedule. And then there's, you know, the kind of larger legal implications of not having a certified housing element. That we've kind of just been putting out in different ways, in terms of penalties and the other things we've talked about.
Right. But HCD is going to have a lot to do, I mean. You there, there's a lot of moving parts there. I mean, it seems unlikely that. January first, they're going to say, oh, sorry, you, you know, this isn't good enough, and now we're going to take all control away from you. I mean. Presumably, this is still an ongoing process, as they got to get all this stuff sorted out and set.
The housing element is definitely an ongoing process. Uh, what we have heard, as long as we are making a good faith effort towards certification, they will continue to work with us on a housing element.
Yeah.
But my understanding is the zoning code is limit is in the law, and they do not have the authority. To bend that rule. So we really do have to have the zoning code in place in January.
Good, good. Um, okay, then the last question is, um. I noticed that you, when you talked about the upzoning of maybe putting in like some kind of sunset provision, um. Which got me thinking about, I mean, can we create a housing element? That is something that's sort of the reverse of that, which says, what if we say a hundred and twenty ADUs? And if we're on target to hit the hundred and twenty over the first three years, we keep going. And if we're not, then there are other provisions that kick in. So sort of a, you know, a reverse sunset, you know, a sunrise clause that says. You know, if you're not following the trajectory that you um basically said you'd be on, then. This is the way we plan to sort of mitigate, but have it as an automatic trigger, so that it's not just, oh, and. You know, we'll magically, you know, come up and fill in the gap, because I I can see HCD would not go for that. But you get what I'm after is, it seems like if we could find the softer. Impact things and have them, if we think there's a reasonable chance we could hit it. With a sort of a kicker underneath it, so HCD will go, all right, I mean, this seems a little, a little. Um, too large for our liking, but with this underlying sunrise clause. We could see how you're going to get there. Has there been any thought to that kind of approach?
Yes, and there are some cities and towns that take some some kind of approach like that. The committee talked about it kind of in different ways. We did in- integrate some elements of that type of an approach. So there's two different ADU programs, for example, that say, if we're not meeting our numbers. Then we will add this extra incentive to the ADU program, such as subsidizing. Um, affordable ADUs is one of the options that would kick in. And the other one is streamlining the review, like basically go to the front of the line. Um, for the building and planning department for ADUs and junior ADUs. So go beyond the state law requirements for processing. So we did try to implement that, and that was a direct feedback that we got. I had a meeting with HCD representative. She's one of the reviewers for San Mateo County, and we walked through the numbers with her. And she said, I'm not saying it's impossible, but, you know, I got the impression from her that she felt like the number we were already proposing was a stretch. But it was her idea to add those programs that would kick in if we weren't meeting our numbers. That was her suggestion. So if we wanted to go further than what we have. We would need, my opinion, a pretty dramatic thing that would kick in.
Right.
For HCD to believe it.
Yeah.
Because it has to be reasonable. I don't know how we would prove something is going to be reasonable. And so we would have to, you know, and then if we're talking about something more. Like a larger scale, like we've talked about, you have to add another housing site, for example. But now maybe you're in the middle of a housing element cycle, now you only have four years for that site to get developed, instead of eight years for that site to get developed.
Yeah.
So you could really run into trouble in terms of not keeping up. If it's not really thoughtfully set out. So I'm not saying it's impossible. I'm just not sure what the choices would be that.
Yeah, okay, yeah, no, I just wanted to understand, because it seems like something along those lines is we're thinking about, and it sounds like you've already started. At least some thought along those lines.
Yes.
So, okay, great. Um, that's it for me. Thank you. And and I really appreciate all the work that you and the committee have done on this. I mean, you know, it's, it really is a tremendous work product.
Great, thanks, Craig. Uh, Nicholas?
Yeah, I want to start off by uh saying that I think my fellow commissioner, uh Taylor, has an excellent idea. And I don't think that as a member of the ad hoc committee, we really explored that in any. Uh, depth and is worth uh, is worth considering. Um, I I may have more to say on that after I've had an opportunity to consider it uh today. Um. I I do have a process question, and that is, at our last uh planning commission meeting, we. Uh, decided that we were going to have two meetings, and I'm not sure if that's changed since our. Uh, little plebiscite that we had uh uh on that. Can uh the chair uh help me out?
You bet. Um, no, we bounced around. Uh, we, I think you got an email that we're going to have one meeting, but right now we have space on the calendar. For another meeting in two weeks. So if we can wrap up today, that'd be great, but we have, we, if any. Issue needs more time, we're prepared to have a second meeting on June twenty ninth.
The the reason why I ask is we also have uh five additional sections of the housing element that I don't believe are on the table right now.
Mm-mm.
Uh, and I'm particularly interested in a second meeting, given Commissioner Taylor's uh suggestion. Uh, and we, we did talk about it. We felt pretty good about it. Uh, uh, and uh, I I would certainly like to uh leave the issue open at the uh end of the meeting.
Sounds good.
The um, uh, other kinds of things that I have, just as a process question, is there's a established a safety, ad hoc safety committee? That was supposed to be the other half of us, and we were going to get back together. And I see you shaking your head.
No, I don't think there was an ad hoc safety committee.
There there was a safety committee that was to be established, that was going to end up marrying back up with this committee. We had a little vote on it, and I believe it was taken back and uh council decided that that was a good idea. Uh. There was a fire safety committee that's supposed to link back up. We can go back through the minutes and.
Sorry, I'm not following. When do you think it was? A a committee of who? Like, who who was supposed to be on the committee?
There was broader.
Any commissioners or or?
No, safety committee that was going to be established to come back and join in to. Uh, uh, provide input uh on the uh housing element at the same time. At our next meeting that we have on this issue, I will go and uh flag it for you in the minutes. So we will go uh go from there. Uh, I'd like to follow up on Austin item that Commissioner has to raise. And that is the impact on other elements uh of the uh general plan. In the consistency section at the housing element, uh draft housing element, it identifies that there will need to be. Uh, changes to, or there will be inconsistencies, there will be inconsistencies within the general plan. Uh, if this plan were to be uh adopted, and talks about uh other sections. So I'm wondering. Uh, if uh uh. Planning director or uh town council, if you can outline what those other sections are that we had in mind when we wrote that. I think it's on. Page two or three. Uh, and what the implications might be and what the timeframe is. So for example, on the uh issue of uh circulation, uh on. Uh, on issues of sustainability, uh, for example, greenhouse gas, if we're going to have a. Three hundred new housing units. How, what, are we going to be able to stay on track with our with our goals? Uh, for services, for water. Uh, and there's kind of a ripple effect that goes through, and it's hoping that. Uh, it looks like there's been some, at least some initial thought as to the issue of consistency. And if you could expound on the consistency statement, I think I've got it flagged here. Uh, on uh general plan consistency, it's PDF page nine. And uh. Where it says the town has reviewed other elements of the general plan and determined the housing element is not consistent with the other elements. Therefore, the town plans to amend the other elements. At the same time, the housing element is adopted. So that will be internal consistency. What should we expect there?
So we know for sure that there's going to be changes to be made to the land use element to the map. And then, um, so we know for sure those areas have to be changed. And then we'll, we're going to literally go through all of the other general plan air um elements and look for potential areas of inconsistency. And then we would bring those back. This this commission will have a primary responsibility in looking all of those materials together. So you'll have the housing element in front of you and the draft changes to the other elements all at once, so that we can ensure consistency between all of them. Um, a couple of the items you brought up probably live in the environmental review. But some of them are kind of what's in the general plan itself.
Yeah, I mean, eh, for example, conservation, you know, if we're going to, for example, put fifty houses on Ford Field. Uh, that that's going to require revisiting the conservation element, presumably. Uh, if, and I, I haven't gone back, but in the sustainability element, it would certainly be interesting to know. Uh, what happens if we add in three hundred more units uh to our GHG plans and goals? Uh, and again, has the town. Done a review of that at this point in time? And if the town has, uh, can you talk about it?
We have not done that review yet. Um, we're just working late into the night and all weekend long to get you the housing element. So. The consistency with the other elements is still forthcoming.
Got it. And so all of that's going to be done at the same time.
Yes.
And Laura, what's the timing that the planning commission would review these changes on the other sections of the general plan? Is that before July or it's in the October timeframe?
In the fall timeframe, fall into like that, you know, October, November, December timeframe.
Okay.
I I would just add in that um these types of what we call conforming general plan changes are very standard when you adopt a housing element. Um, all cities are are dealing with these types. Um, all cities are, are dealing with these types of changes because of the increased um Rena allocation this cycle. Um, so it's, it's something that we had anticipated in the beginning and, and had certainly budgeted for. Um, I, I think primarily, um, as Laura mentioned, it's going to be in the areas of um land use and circulation. Um, sustainability, we've looked at a tiny bit. Um, the, the council is proceeding with a green building initiative. And I believe they've, they've authorized us um to look at the all electric. So for the homes themselves, we're not expecting a lot of increased uh greenhouse gas impacts. And we've already analyzed that um. We, we are currently analyzing the, the GHG impacts of the uh traffic associated with the housing. So, you know, we, we flagged a lot of these issues and, you know, we, we do plan on, on resolving them.
And similarly, we've also looked at water and service capacity to make sure that we have water for 20% bump up in units in uh in town.
With the 25% drought reduction.
Yeah.
So Cal Water has, has told us that, that there is sufficient water. But, you know, we certainly will continue to check with them.
So similarly, then on that basis, we aren't going to have any inconsistency with other policies of the town that would, for example, lead to the need to do an EIR.
That's, that's our in anticipation at this point, yeah.
Have we done an initial study at this point? Done through the checklist?
Um, have, I, I don't know. I know that we're in the process of doing that.
Yeah, we're working on it right now, but it's not complete.
Great. At the next meeting, could we come back and uh visit where we uh, where we are on the initial study? Just to keep ourselves uh on track there. Similarly, with consistency sorts of things and making sure that we have continued local control. Are we also going to be developing uh objective standards for design review? Uh, in time?
Well, we're going to be working on the standards in two phases. So we're going to be doing all of the basic zoning um in time by January. So that'll be, you know, floor area, height setback, all of those basic things. Um, and then we're going to come back early in 2023 and do more fine tune objective standards and that will be much more specific. Um, so we're working out the details of that right now with the um consultant that's going to be working with us on it. We wanted to make sure we could get all the basic zoning done in time.
Is there a problem uh town council with uh subsequently uh putting together our uh objective criteria uh after we have our housing element uh in place and our zoning in place and doing it post uh uh 2020, January 2023?
Oh, if, if a project comes in um during that little window that we don't have objective criteria, we will not be able to impose our uh subjective criteria. And if we don't have objectives, then, then the design is, is um obviously um not going to be at the level that we would expect. Um, but we don't have any indication that, you know, a, a project on one of the, you know, couple of sites that have been designated as multifamily would come in right away. We've had no um, you know, pre-applications or, or discussions to indicate that that would happen.
So just to be clear, there's no limitation on having further uh objective criteria uh come in uh uh later on after.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Um, right. The, the loss of local control relates to the density as opposed to the, the density change as opposed to the um uh objective criteria. So we should be okay there.
How is the ADU uh 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 calculation in terms of um distribution change between what we're proposing now and what is presently or has been in place in the last housing element?
Um, what's being proposed here is split between the income categories in thirty, 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 ten across four categories. So 30% of the units to very low, 30% um low, 30% mod, 10% above moderate. So this is the formula that, as far as I know, everyone in San Mateo County is using. Um, it's been reviewed by HCD. It's um different than our current formula that we have been using. Um, you know, I don't have it in front of me, but at the top of my head, it's not as equal. There's a lot more very low income units in our current, had in our current um numbers and not as many low income. So it's just like different percentages that vary between like fifteen and 10 and 20, like around those numbers.
And why?
Sorry, that's not great answer.
No, it is one of these things where what it is, so even distribution as opposed to waiting towards the very low and low, uh, which is sufficient. And why are we making that deviation?
Um, with each housing element cycle of the last couple of cycles, there's been a fresh study. And so we are just taking advantage of the most recent study on ADUs and how they get rented.
So there's an actual study that 21 elements put together and said this is the appropriate. And they revoked the previous study?
Um, I wouldn't say they revoked it. It just kind of supersedes um because it's the best available information. And I believe it was a Bay Area wide study that um then got some fine tuning for our local environment.
Got it. Do we think that? I'm not sure why we wouldn't continue using what we've seen if we uh, if we've, unless we feel it's not supportable.
I think what they um recommended is more supportable. I think it has better support to use um that information off of that study than what we've been using in the past.
So just, so it said that this is, this supersede, the other study is no longer valid.
Um, I don't know that it used such strong language. They just said this is the latest information and this is what we recommend using.
For our next meeting, could you send that uh to the uh planning commissioners, please?
See, see what? The study itself or?
Yep. And presumably there's a different finding uh made by uh, uh, made by the uh uh, by the 21 elements entity.
Uh, remember, we don't have any vocal data regarding um the, the rental. Um, the rentals of our existing ADUs in.
Uh, that's right. But previously, the previous study was based on a survey that was conducted within San Mateo County. This is a Bay Area wide that has, you know, the Bay Area is a big place. Uh, and if we have some more localized data, that might be more, that might be more appropriate. Or before we decide to abandon what we have been doing, uh, we gotta convince ourselves that that's a good thing.
I wouldn't recommend continuing using what we're using. There's not a clear, um, there's not as clear of a rationale and methodology as we would expect to see today. Because it was just at that time, it wasn't as stringent. There weren't as many, um, there was, there's much lower expectations. So I think what, you know, the newer information will be more um supported by data.
Love to, love to see the study. Thanks. I think that's what I've got.
Great, thanks Nicholas. Um, let's see, I had a few questions. Um, on the affiliated housing, um, we're changing it to be uh people that work in town, not just that work for that particular institution, I think. Like the, the church, let me just use an example. They, if they don't want to rent it to their own employees or don't have employees, they um somehow coordinate with the other business institutions and businesses in town to find renters or uh. How's that work? Or i- am I right? That's what they do?
Um, we would have to, in order to make this work, establish some kind of actual program around it. And so that would be part of our upcoming affordable housing program that we're talking about launching with the, with the um policies and programs. It would probably take the shape of some sort of um preference program that the town council would adopt that would kind of set a policy that we would ask other people to follow. And we have to be really careful with fair housing. We've talked about this before, but the gist of it would be is we would give preference to people who live and work in the community. And then if there was no one that, you know, met that preference criteria for that type of unit or whatever it might be. So we need to think all that through.
Okay, okay. So it's not established. I got it. And then um on the table of, for the public, I'm looking at page 104. You, in the Christ Church one versus the Ladera, one of them has um, all the units are above moderate income. At the other institution, many of them are very low income. How did you get that distribution? You asked them and that's what they told you or there was some other way to make that distribution?
Um, it varies for different situations. Um, so for example, um, the Christ Church one, they're very early, right? And there are conversations. So we just had very light conversations with them about being included in the program. Um, so we just assigned them to above moderate.
I see.
You know, we don't know, we're just kind of making best assumption.
Got it.
Um, Ladera Church is meets the default density, the 20 units per acre.
Oh, I see.
You know, they've expressed different things in the past about what they may wish to do. But they may wish to do very low income housing there. So we assign that into the two lower categories.
Got it.
And then Sequoias is what they told us of what they were interested in.
Right. I, and I could see that one is both um kind of residents plus employees. I can kind of guess that one. Okay, thank you. Um, and then my, uh, kind of one topic, but it might be kind of big. Um, many residents are concerned about the opt-in upzoning, like, you know, how big it would look. And I really like your pick little sketches. Um, I think I heard you in some of those discussions use um far, the floor area ratio. That's a typical thing we use in the um more commercial districts and not the straight residential. Is that right?
Um, yes, so most communities have floor area ratio or floor area is the way that they describe it. Here we do all those adjustment factors. So that's why we have the adjusted maximum floor area for our residential districts.
Yeah. Is this too much to ask for? I feel like um what would help all of us uh uh to feel better or, or worse about the opt-in upzoning is to have little diagrams like you had, but have uh more, more pictures, have some that are what has historically been allowed in Portola Valley. Let me say um from five years ago and further, like you, you know, maybe a one acre lot here, you could build this. Now there's been some state laws, you actually are allowed to build, you know, another 800. And then what you could do in a um SB nine split, if someone were trying to um kind of put the maximum, you, you had one picture there, but like on one lot, compare what people are used to, what's legal now and what the opt-in would be. So people can kind of see how, how much different or not different this is from what we're all already living with. Does that make sense?
It does. Um, like a couple of examples, for ex, like something like that in the different scenarios.
Yeah, and like just a one acre, I think a lot of places are one acre, so maybe a one. And I know this is unrealistic, but a one acre flat lot, because otherwise um slope has so much more complexity. I know everybody has a slope, but a one acre flat lot, what have peo- people been able to build? You know, what can they build now and what might this opt-in kind of look like?
Yeah, we can definitely think about how to do that um with graphics or tables or something like that. So, yeah, we can, we can do that.
Yeah, thank you. If it uh, if something comes out uh and looks usable. Uh, that's all my questions. My fellow commissioners covered my other ones.
And can I ask one more question that's sort of tangentially related to what you just asked? Um, if somebody wanted to upzone, do they have to submit a plan on how they're going to divide the lot? Or do you just get your upzone designation and then later you go do your planning and stuff? How, how does that process work?
Um, we haven't gotten to that level of detail. We'd certainly be interested in people's feedback. They, we would want there to be some connection between an actual development because we want to do some kind of sunset on this. So we want to know what to expect from people. Um, so we need to think through that level of detail still. And happy to hear what you think about it in the discussion part.
Great, thanks everyone. We'll now move on to public input and comments. So I'll call on people um kind of in order that they have their hands up. And uh, we are trying to stick to three minutes, everyone, if you could pay attention to the timer. Uh, let's see, first we have Susan Ford Dorsey.
Um, through the chair, would you like me to do that thing where we keep track and I answer as many questions as I can?
Yeah, I like that system. Yeah. Uh, are people familiar with that? Ask your questions. We're not going to answer them. Um, each one, we'll collect them all. And then Laura will answer them um kind of as a group at the end, um, to the extent we have the info on that question. Great. Okay, uh, Susan Ford Dorsey.
There we go. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you all this evening. My name is Susan Ford Dorsey and I am the widow of the man who gave the land to the town of Portola Valley in 1971. That is now known as the Dorothy Ford Park. His name was Tom Ford and he was, he settled in Portola Valley in the sixties. In fact, he was instrumental along with Bill Lane in um incorporating Portola Valley into a town. So he gave the gift of the land to the town on two conditions. The first is that it stay in open space. And the second, that it be named for his mother. And that is why it is called the Dorothy Ford Park. So our family, like every other family in Portola Valley, has benefited greatly from that beautiful open space, the solace and the peace that it offers, along with a wonderful uh playing field. And I've gone to many, many baseball games in, in uh at Ford Field. And I know that that is not on the table in terms of being developed, but the rest of it is. And I will say that we have continued as a family to help the town of Portola Valley. Whenever Ford Field needed to be refurbished, we were on the list of people to call and we always responded to those calls and helped with maintaining the park and helping with the people, helping with the, with the playing field. We also helped Bill with the, the town center when it was being built. So while I am like everyone else uh in the town sympathetic to the need for more housing, I uh implore you to look at the other options that are good options um and not to take away this open space. I would really like the town to keep its promise to my late husband and to the town that it be kept in open space um and that we'd be able to, to continue to, to enjoy this um, this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have George Savage.
Hi there, uh, this is George Savage and I speak in opposition to the opt-in zoning program. I, I urge you to refer to my written comments for my complete argument. Laura mentioned in passing a sunsetting the opt-in zoning based on achieving Rena goals. This is not mentioned in the draft, nor is the distortion in economic incentives addressed. Uh, for instance, is there a 12-unit cap to opt-in zoning? Or is it open season until the Rena numbers uh actually built? Once the profit incentive of upzoning becomes reality, once select residents are harmed while others reap windfalls, once well-heeled developers and realtors react to this legislated reallocation of economics, can we really expect, expect that the opt-in program will be repealed? If not, we will see the rapid urbanization of the town as a cascade of properties are upzoned and offered for sale. Even with a hard cap, do we really want town residents to wait around to see who eventually wins the lottery? Losing the value of their single-family residence? Isn't going through the Rena process once enough stress for us? Without a hard cap, and none is mentioned in the draft, upzoning is actually a very radical change to our housing policy. One certain to obliterate our general plan. Incentives matter. When you put millions of dollars on the table to change behavior, you will succeed. The program will increase suspicion and distrust by maximizing zoning. The program will increase suspicion and distrust by maximizing zoning uncertainty as to time, place, and quantity. Potentially extending this uncertainty over the entire eight-year arena horizon. The fundamental problem is this, opt-in zoning doesn't change zoning. It changes how zoning decisions are made, by whom, where, and when. This is destabilizing and bad public policy. All the other programs discussed tonight represent discrete changes made by the people's elected representatives. Opt-in zoning delegates zoning decision-making to exiting residents. In effect, outsourcing zoning decisions to the purchasers, the multi-unit developers. Leavers reap the benefits, remainers bear the costs. The opt-in program changes the fundamental principle of zoning, which is clustering compatible uses. Instead, opt-in zoning randomizes different uses within a neighborhood. You will never know where or when you will find yourself next door to a condo complex, so stay vigilant. Opt-in zoning creates a multimillion-dollar payday for early sellers. In effect, residents are placed in a prisoner's dilemma. Sell to a developer early and reap windfall profits, or potentially find yourself next door to a 12-unit development. With your single-family property value substantially reduced. The only way to restore a portion of the lost value is up to upzone yourself, preferably before your neighbor does. Since market values will decrease as as everyone races for the exits. And let's be clear, we don't need this for meeting the Rena program or the buffer requirements. Eliminating this still has us exceed the 15% threshold. Modest increase in the ADU forecast will maintain the current 21% buffer. The HCD three-year formula is obsolete, as already acknowledged due to the COVID shutdown. In summary, opt-in zoning is a developer's dream and a resident's nightmare. It should be deleted from the Housing Element Program. Thank you.
Great, thank you, George. Dana is next.
There we go. Hi, if if you guys have planning commission, if you deem that you think that the the general plan, all the elements are going to need to be revisited. I want to see that go through the people of the town. And I would like to see, like the Housing Element Committee, I would like to see a committee of committee members, sustainability committee members, conservation committee members. And I think that that will take a lot of time, but I think it needs to go through the vision of the people. When we're dealing with a general plan. So if that does need to go, Laura, I want to see that committee set up ASAP. So that so that we can get going on it. And I think the people of the town could be really helpful here. So especially the committee members. So let's get it done. If we have to look at the general plan, we're going to do it through the citizens. Thank you.
Thanks, Dana. Next, Karen Askey.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello. At the Housing Element Committee meetings this year, there has been a consensus among residents that they want new development to be dispersed throughout town. And to keep our community as low density, staying true to the general plan. A concern that I have with the current Housing Element draft is that there is strong potential for overdevelopment. From both the 21% buffer and the higher density rezoning, and Judith mentioned that earlier. Why can't we lower the buffer to 15% per state guidelines? And let's remember that buffer is a guideline, not a mandate. I believe that the ADU target numbers are too low, as I've heard from some other planning commission members. They reflect primarily ADUs as far as I can tell, and not the JADUs. We are on pace to have at least 15 ADUs this year. And with the proposed amnesty program and streamlining that's going on, we should see that number rise each year. What if we reach our target of 92 at the end of four years? How do we stop overdeveloping? As my understanding is that we cannot rezone those higher-density lots that we already zoned. Simply put, we need to add JADU numbers to the bottom line. Whether it's in the ADU number or a separate line. JADUs are low cost, serve lower income segments, and easy to implement. They do not increase any footprint and would be dispersed throughout the town. Think of all the many homes in Portola Valley already with a room with a separate entrance. Why haven't we surveyed those homeowners to show proof to the state that we can meet those increased numbers? We are developing incentive programs and matching low-income folks with those lower-income units. And any of us aging residents are willing to offer JADUs to a caregiver, a graduate student, or the like. If we added 40 JADUs to this plan, just five per year. We can eliminate the opt-ins, which we're hearing many residents disapprove of. Glen Oaks, so that we preserve more of our scenic corridor. And we could also bring down the 4395 Nathhorse down to say six units per acre. So that we're not, again, subject to bonus density in that capacity. We must ensure that we do not overdevelop and we need to avoid high-density and potential density bonuses wherever possible. The other concern I have is earlier on Laura said that 10% have received e-notices about the plan. I'm concerned about the other 90% and how they have their say. On affiliated housing, I just have a question of how you manage that if someone leaves working in the town, do they still get the housing? And on the opt-ins, on the examples, it would be nice to know the distances between the buildings that you presented. Because there are fire hazards associated with that. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Next, Kristen Brew.
Hi, this is Kristen Brew. I just have one question, which I just, for the optional opt-in upzoning, what I don't know is a neighborhood with a pre-existing HOA, can they forbid it from occurring in their neighborhood? If this is the case, and other neighborhoods like Alpine Hills will most likely not qualify because of fire danger and slope. Would this lead to a preponderance of upzoning in Cortimadera Nathhorse lots over one acre?
Thank you. As we said, we'll get to the answers after we go through all the questions. Thanks. Next, Trish Heald.
Hi, I am hearing a lot about residents being very uncomfortable with the opt-in rezoning. And I would ask that that is reflected in the document where you noted the objections that people were having. It was noted that upzoning on people's private residence was not preferred. So I just want it noted that residents are very uncomfortable with the opt-in rezoning. I'd also like to know what the legal definition of multifamily housing is. Because I'm suspecting that ADUs and JADUs can count as multifamily housing. And if we use them, then we are dispersing multifamily housing across the community. I'd also like to encourage the committee to please eliminate the opt-in rezoning. It's only 12 units in the plan. We can easily add 12 units to the ADU and JDU count by adding just 12 JD, JADUs, like my colleague Karen Askey just said. I'd also like to reinforce Commissioner Taylor's point. That we haven't really had evidence so far that's reflective of a normal growth year. It's been COVID. We're still coming out of COVID. It could be in three to four years. We have a really huge resurgence of ADU and JDU interest. And also that Laura commented that people don't even know about JADUs. So I'd like to know, do you believe you have adequately informed the community what a JADU entails? And have you adequately taken account of who would be interested? And if you did that, I really honestly believe you can find 12 more units to put into the ADU, JADU count to be able to eliminate entirely the opt-in rezoning. Also, if that is totally impossible, then I would just like to note that I really support Commissioner Taylor's sunrise idea. Once we say it's okay to do opt-in rezoning, we cannot take it back. So I'd like there to be the option to absolutely try everything else. And let the state understand that if those things don't work, we have a solid plan. Which would be opt-in rezoning, but that we do not, absolutely do not put that in the plan. Without trying first to go through the options of adding ADUs and JADUs. Or alternatively, increasing the buffer, which is just suggested between 15 and 30%. I think we could easily take that down, certainly below 20%, and hopefully below 15. Thank you.
Thanks, Trish. Next is Nan Shawstuck.
Okay, good evening commissioners. This has been pretty interesting. I'm Nan Shawstuck, a longtime resident and a member of the Geologic Safety Committee, and I've got a couple of comments on the Housing Element. The first is as a concerned resident. In my opinion, the opt-in rezoning program would be very harmful to the town. It would be extremely divisive. It would pit friends and neighbors against one another. When all we need are 12 more above-market housing units to achieve our Rena quota plus the buffer. We can easily meet the quota without subjecting the town to harmful and random rezoning. The few more JADUs or ADUs, as people have mentioned, are by lowering the buffer. But once the opt-in is adopted, there will be no going back. The town will be changed. Another issue for the opt-in program is that the safety criteria given in the draft Housing Element are too general. They allow for too much interpretation. Opt-in lots would have to be examined very carefully for geologic suitability, sorry, putting on my geologist's hat, for multiple dwellings. The municipal code would have to be very specific for lots with a geologic issue that are perfectly fine for a single residence. Given the high stakes here, I recommend very strongly that the town hold a referendum on opt-in. I know there's a lot of opposition. Second, as a member of the Geologic Safety Committee. I've reviewed and commented on the safety element, safety element, and have followed the evolution of the housing element. Safety element should have been completed first, and then those findings folded into initial discussing discussions on the housing element. I'll constrain my comments to geologic and seismic safety, although fire, cumulative traffic, evacuation, infrastructure, and climate change are safety factors that should have been carefully considered before drafting the housing element. I'm going to call the approach to geologic hazards "safety light," I put that in quotation marks. Here's one example. The Housing Element Committee was given a map showing the constraints for eliminating parcels from consideration. One constraint was liquefiable soil, which we really don't want to build on. The maps don't show all the areas in town identified by the state as potentially liquefiable. So some of the parcels on the list for development are in these areas. But the committee members weren't given this information. The result is that on paper, a parcel may be planned for a density of 20 units per acre. But if liquefiable soil is detected by geotechnical testing, the real density will be much lower. A second condition limiting development is proximity to a fault zone. What is the fault zone? Town's geologic map doesn't agree with the USGS's mapping of several faults in town. Who's right? The only way to find out is ground truthing, field investigation. The USGS has mapped a fault running diagonally through the Glen Oaks parcel, for instance, but the fault's not on the town's map. It's the infamous hermit fault, which has been found in the bank of Lestranco's Creek at the edge of the Glen Oaks parcel. If this fault is not on the town's geologic map, will our new municipal code require a potential developer to dig a trench and try to find it? Or, you know, so that's fine. If not, here's safety light again, it'll be ignored. Lip service paid to seismic safety without enforcing the strong rules we've historically had to protect residents from very real seismic hazards. And by the way, Glen Oaks also has potentially liquefiable soils. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thanks, Nan. Next is Dale Fow. Hey Dale.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for your time. I want to follow up a little bit on my written comments that I sent earlier today, and I know you received them because Laura mentioned them. First, there's just a little clarification. Kara mentioned that the Morse map is going to be on the safety element. I know that the Morse map was never formally adopted by the town. If it's going to be incorporated into the safety element, that is news to us, because in the review of the draft, safety element, it was not at all involved. So if that's new news, that's good news, but it still was not adopted, but it is a good map. I have three key points to follow up on. One is water. As I pointed out, we are going to be subject to mandatory water restrictions in Portola Valley. I don't think anywhere anybody has talked to Cal Water to see what they can do. I'm quite concerned now that this has come up. We have essentially one water tank in town to serve all of the town. And in a fire, if everybody turns on their sprinklers, that tank will empty very quickly. I think this needs to be seriously investigated. Evacuation, I sent all the links around about the evacuation study from Fair and Peers. This is very significant. I think everybody ought to pay attention to this. I now understand that Fair and Peers is actually going to do a little bit of a study to see what additional cars will do. So we have some some view as to what the impact will be, but it's not going to be good. We know that the times will lengthen for an evacuation. This is a serious safety element and needs to be considered by this commission, because it's certainly not going to be taken up by the the ad hoc committee about safety. And of course, the fire map is the biggest issue of all. And I I would suggest that all of you listen to Fire Marshal Bullard's presentation. One of the key things that he is going to, is going to be incorporated into the woodside fire, fire maps is the impact of structures and the heat density and embers that are created by those structures. And I think you will see that that areas that even that are considered safe now will not be considered safe in the context of a wooie and and structure fires. So I I would really suggest maybe this commission ought to have a hearing with with Fire Marshal Bullard before you proceed. Because I can see that later on, you're just going to have to revisit this whole whole exercise when those fire maps come out. Thank you.
See, next we have Robin Murray.
Hello, I can't, can you hear me?
Yes, that's good.
Okay, so I can't find the presentation online, so I'm doing a bit of this memory. So much of the recommendations presented are based on the community engagement slide, I believe. And this is a pretty foundational set of assumptions upon which the recommendations are being made. I actually don't believe any of the claims made in this slide are known to be true. They might be, they might not be, I just don't know. For what it's worth, I believe this slide does not have the support of the majority of the PV residents. But that's how I could well be wrong. And so I think when you're about to make a recommendation on an issue that's so emotional, that's so contentious, so potentially litigious. I think we want to know that the claims have the support of the residents of the town. And so as far as I'm aware, there's been no systematic survey of the town's residents to date. There's been sort of, you know, outreach, there's been feel, there's been a sort of community input, but there's been no systematic survey. And I think when you're doing something that's so important, you actually need to know that the plan has the support of the residents. So I would urgently suggest you actually find a way to solicit opinion. Separately, the voluntary upsetting, I think in my opinion, is just something that will tear the town apart. Pitting neighbor against neighbor, and I really haven't heard much support for this proposal around the community. So just my opinion is we drop that proposal and find another alternative. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
Could I ask, Robin, what slide are you referring to, Robin? Hopefully I didn't, we didn't lose you.
There was a slide called the Community Engagement Slide that I think Laura presented. I couldn't find it on the you know, on the, on the website. But it seemed to have a set of assumptions about what the community felt or what the community believed. And I'm just not sure that's actually known to be true. It might be true, I just don't know. And I think we need to find out whether it's actually true.
Okay, but the Community Engagement Slide is the one you're referring to. I just want to make sure if I go back and look at it, I can sort of relate your comments to it. Thank you.
I I think we're talking about the slide that said something like what we've heard and what we've learned. Is that the slide, Robin?
That's the slide, and I felt that it was, maybe, you know, less than 10% of people have given input. So my comment was actually, I'm not sure it's representative of the community.
Oh, yeah, just to clarify, that slide was meant to represent the discussion. Just to clarify, that slide was meant to represent the discussion of the ad hoc housing element committee, not any systematic survey of all residents. Great, thanks. Next is Margaret Blair.
Can, good evening. I have, I'm going to go back to the Ford Field question and the density bonus. I looked up something and it says, "The law is a state mandate. Projects that are a hundred percent affordable to lower incomes get the maximum density bonus and concessions under the law. A developer who meets state law requirements is entitled to receive the density bonus and other benefits as a matter of right." So I'm not entirely sure how we think we can control that. And if that is indeed true, and a developer gets the density bonus, then he, then that company can build to their desire. The two stories that we want can become three, and the, they can be bigger. And going from that, I'm going to tag on to what Dale just said. I have been, I have spoken with Don Bullard, and he also gave me a copy of the letter he wrote in December twenty twenty-one to Woodside, stating that a real danger for, he was talking about Portola Valley and Woodside, given the drought we're under, given the use of water, given the potential lowering of groundwater pressure, the density of houses could be a real danger. They would not be able to fight a fire of house-to-house fire. They, that, that would just be an issue they could not deal with. And I don't think that we've dealt with this. If we're still talking about building to this kind of density, and we have a fire marshal saying they could not cope with such a fire, I think we have a lot more work to do. Thank you.
Thanks, Margaret. Next is Rita Comas Whitney.
Okay.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. I spoke to, you know, it was mixed email, and then I wind up having to speak to David from A Sola, and A Sola is right behind Glen Oaks, where the horses are. And David only recently found out about the whole building at Glen Oaks, which will impact him and, of course, our horse community. He recently spent about $2 million updating the barn, so it was quite a shock to him when he found out recently about this. And so I'm not sure how the message is getting out to the people that are going to be impacted other than, you know, the residents that are being impacted. With Ford Field, with everything going on in Ford Field, I just have a question, because that's supposed to be open space. And my understanding of open space on the town websites is that open space is supposed to be open space, not open space that can be turned into a parking lot, housing complex. You know, it's supposed to be there with those two beautiful trees, especially, you know, Ford Field, the way it's described on the website under open space. So, and then there's just the one builder with the one quote. It would be nice for the community to hear what another builder might have to say about that particular site, and a little bit more research on what is open space in this town. So are we to understand that any open space can be turned into a gas station, can be turned into a municipal lot, can be turned into a 7-Eleven? And that would be a shock to those people that then donated that open space in the community, so that that particular land could stay open space. And I just want to also comment that in looking through the, I've listened to a lot of the housing element meetings, and there was one particular home that was up for upzoning, rezoning, and that was a particular home that had their fire insurance canceled twice. And it's known publicly, it's not a secret, that this particular person have lost their fire insurance twice. And it just seems odd that then that particular property would continue to be on the list of potential upzoning as, you know, with more cars, more, you know, combustible materials. So I just have some questions, and I will be putting them in the, in the portal, but are the comments tonight going to be added to the portal from this group? That is another question. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Rita. And lastly, we have Mary Hefte.
Thank you. Great work, and you're doing a great job. Thank you. I wanted to say, there's one comment that keeps coming up, which is that there's a mixed opinion of what the rural character of our community is. And actually, we have a very clear mandate of what the rural character of our, our community is, and I would really like to see that noted. That is on the opening page of our general plan. It's very clear what the rural character of our, our community is. And the A number one thing is the scenic corridors. And that, of course, is what we're discussing tonight. What is going to happen to our scenic corridors and how? Are we going to look? And I, I, of course, am very grateful for the Ford's efforts at founding our town, and also for having donated these open spaces. Many of us have given a lot of money for open spaces, and we have a commitment to both open spaces, but also not just to selfishly wanting to be surrounded with green, but we believe that we are adding something environmentally to our greater community, that we give a beautiful space for biking, that we give a wonderful place for people to hike, that we also add clean water and clean air, and the sense of your blood pressure falling twenty points when you come into our community. And many people have mentioned this. These are intangibles, but the tangibles are right there on our general plan. All you have to do is read the opening page. So thank you very much for your hard work. I realize it's a rock and a hard place, and just want you to remember, we're clear about what it means to have a rural character in our town. Thanks.
Thanks, Mary. Next, we have Kristy Corley.
Yes, thanks for taking my comments. I have to say Susan Ford's comments really touched me, their continued donations to our town, and for us to turn around and take a donated land that is, doesn't seem right. I, I just have to say thank you to the Ford family for donating the land and giving us our scenic corridor as we drive into Portola Valley. And I hope we really take her comments seriously and reconsider what we might do in that area. I ask for an EIR for all areas of infrastructure in our town, such as water, sewer, drainage. We still see the AT&amp;T RV sitting there for many, many months. I'm not sure why we are not even taking care of that. So I think a much-needed EIR on our infrastructure, we should be getting started with that. We should check the flow of our water, the capability of our water, the flow of our sewer system, the capability of that. We don't want any, any problems there. I also am concerned about your thought of a mitigated negative declaration. So a negative declaration says an action will have no significant environmental impacts, and therefore does not require a draft or final environmental impact. So a mitigated negative declaration is a negative declaration that incorporates revisions or mitigation measures in the proposed project that will avoid or mitigate the impacts to a point where there clearly is no impacts on the environment would occur. So I don't agree with the mitigated negative declaration. We should have the option to do an EIR if we find that the lot environment needs to be protected. Zoning is how the local government regulates and develops land within its control. It is a broken down into multiple categories to help balance a city, to ensure proper land use, and provide values to the citizens that own the property. As well, zoning helps protect local environment and keeps property values stable. Only we can rezone our land. The state cannot rezone our land. So I ask our elected officials to really take that into consideration when you vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Kristy. Next is David Cardinal.
Great, thanks. First of all, I, I think the, the plan is an amazing attempt to get everybody on the same page. Based on what we've heard tonight, I also think the upzoning obviously isn't going to happen, so I'm not too worried about that. But I, I do think that there's a lot of confusion where people are living in a fantasy world, that they think we can just ignore the state law and the mandates, and somehow fall back on some notion of yesteryear, where we can go back to nineteen sixty-four and live in a different world. If we're going to develop, which we need to do, and we're, we need three hundred more houses, and we have people, fifteen hundred people come into work here every day, and we have no housing for them. So I think that'd be great. Our town was established with covenants that didn't allow people of color to buy houses here, which sucked, and it'd be great to address that, too. Developing along our corridors seems to make sense. People wonder about infrastructure. We have fiber optics along our major streets, Alpen Road and Portola Road. We have sewers. We have water, and admittedly, we're in a drought, so maybe nobody should ever move to California again. But certainly, if we're going to have water, it's there. We have a lot of water tanks, and that's the lowest water level. So I, I think unless you're, you know, in a, in one, a Luddite, we need to move forward, and the town housing plan, maybe plus or minus the upzoning, is an amazingly solid effort to move forward. And for the Fords, God bless them for donating, but maybe they could donate somewhere else if they think we need more housing for affordable housing. They could donate another property, that'd be okay. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next is Betsy Morgan Fowler.
Hello, all. Well, you, you have my appreciation for this is one massive document to wrap your heads around. So thank you all for taking the time out of your lives to serve us in this capacity. I, too, want to recognize and thank the Ford family and all those who have contributed to Portola Valley's open spaces, which are core to our general plan. Our general plan is our DNA. So it's really a big ask to vote on one single element that is destined to have such major impacts on others without time to look at what the collective values and major community goals are. I really think it important to anticipate the increased physical and increased population density on those demands for services. And that, too, is called out in one of the, as one of our major community goals. To continue with that, I thought I would just call out a specific example. Our housing element, which includes a fifty-unit mixed-use multifamily housing at Ford Open Space, land we all treasure, is a part of this, because our planning department has said that in RENA six, the Housing and Community Development is looking for high-density housing without which they may not pass us. I, so I'm going to turn to page one twenty-one in our draft housing element plan. The goal policy programming, program that I'm questioning is eight dash three. Eight dash three reads, "Update the municipal code to comply with the state law to allow a low-barrier navigation center by right in zones where mixed uses are permitted." This is an Assembly Bill twenty-one sixty-two by Wright Housing, which asserts that mixed-use low-income housing, it, it needs to be allowed for in such places. That is temporary housing for homeless populations. A quick note about Portola Valley housing homelessness is that in the three years of twenty fifteen, twenty seventeen, and twenty nineteen, Portola Valley homeless was zero, one, and zero. The sentence in our housing element that I now wish to draw your attention to is that the bill prohibits our jurisdiction from imposing parking requirements on such an interim shelter. So first, we're in a remote community, far from homeless services. We have no homeless population. We're next to no public transportation, and we're told that we cannot provide parking on-site. Knit together, it really makes no sense at all. We must insist on a hundred percent on-site parking for all residential building planned along our major corridors. That is sanity, and that is why I, as I heard Angela Hay speak to you earlier this evening, the circulation element needs to be looked at very carefully. Traffic safety must get a chance to review this with the committee. I beg you to take the time that it's required to do this right. It would be unfair to call ourselves an inclusive community if we don't do the work on the front end to meet the needs of the people that we are going to welcome. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Betsy. Next is Bob.
Good evening, Commissioner. This is Bob Schultz. I, I just wanted to echo, I guess, some of the other people I've heard tonight. One is Betsy, Karen Askey as well. I'm in opposition of really rezoning any, any property in Portola Valley with such high density, such as a, as the twenty unit per acre. I'm definitely concerned with the Nat Horse, this open lot in Nat Horse, because not only can it be twenty or maybe twenty-three, I believe, with the, the actual acreage. If density bonus law is used, then it could be potentially over forty units. And I've heard the town talk about having town, doing a high-density project like that with twenty units per acre on a town-owned land property is good, because it, well, I mean, at least the, the town can stipulate what the developer does. But here, if we allow other parcels, non-private parcels to be zoned at twenty units per acre, we have no control. And isn't that why we are rushing to have this whole RENA process done and finished with, and be certified as to, to maintain control? But here, if we, we think we're getting twenty-three, and suddenly we're getting forty, or that, and that could be in any other property that is also zoned at twenty units per acre. So I'm, I'm voicing opposition to this, and I think there's other alternatives that really haven't been fully looked into, such as ADUs, such as JADUs, or other, or even other town-owned lands. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. And new last person, Rusty Day.
Thank you very much. I, first of all, want to compliment the commission. I think the questioning that I saw each of you engage in, the, the way you're approaching this and the topics you raised, and the care and the thought you're giving to this very laudable, and I appreciate the time and the effort you're putting into this. The point I want to make, I, I want to keep this at a high level. Reinforces something that Commissioner Taylor, I think Commissioner Targ referenced, Dale Fowle referenced. We heard David Cardinal say that, "Don't you understand that there's a mandate? That we're operating under a mandate on the housing element?" And that's true, we are. But don't you also understand that we're operating under a mandate on safety element? And that the mandate on the safety element is no different than the mandate on the housing element? We are required by law to update our safety element. At the same time, we update the housing element. And it's a mandate. We can't ignore that. And so yet, when And so yet, when Commissioner Taylor asked, "Well, you know, what are the dates by which this has to happen?" All we hear about is the housing element. We never hear about the safety element. So if we go and look at the mandates, the state mandates on the safety element, and we think about what they require, I urge you to go look to Government Code 65300G3, because that lays out very explicitly what the mandates are that we're required to comply with for the safety element. We're required to do a comprehensive assessment. Should have been done in 2014, but we're a little behind. We're required to do a comprehensive assessment on all fire hazards throughout the town. We're required to look at the fire hazard severity zones throughout the town. We're required to assess what policies and what programs can abate the hazards and risks. We're just required to come up with a set of goals and policies and objectives to protect the community from the unreasonable risk of wildfire. We've got to come up with a sizable set of implementation measures designed to carry out those goals to protect the community. And we've got to do that by avoiding or minimizing the wildfire hazards associated with new land uses or development. That's mandated that we do that. It's also mandated that we submit this plan to the state Fire Board, CAL FIRE, and to the Woodside Fire Protection District before we finalize the safety element and that we adopt their recommendations or give good reason not to. We are way behind in this. And so I think I would urge you, as you think about this at a high level, as you were doing, and appropriately so, among the many issues that you've heard today that the residents have raised, also, please consider that the general plan requires us to both fish and cut bait, to walk and chew gum, not to subordinate our safety to housing. That's not the mandate here. The mandate is to look at our safety and to develop housing in the context of safe development practices. We're dropping the ball. Thank you.
Thank you, Rusty. New last person, Karen.
Hi, this is Karen Vatra. I hadn't actually planned on speaking, as I spoke many times during the housing element meetings, and I agree with earlier comments about how the opt-in zoning went from trying to find volunteers to see and include them in the map into something that goes on for eight years. And I think that is dangerous. I mean, it's fine if we had selected one or two of those to find those 12 units and put them on the map and be able to have that as a community discussion, but I don't like the way it's morphed. And I, of course, as a former wildfire committee member, are very concerned with the safety element, and that I will echo other people's comments on that. But the reason I decided to speak tonight was I, having attended the majority of these meetings, I had never heard that the Ford Field had been donated. I didn't know the history of that land. The only thing that I come up was the legal discussion about the grant money about the actual field. So I'm concerned that I don't understand how it was, exactly when it was donated and under what premises. And I think that as a community, we need to be more sensitive to that and explore that before we, you know, go full force on Ford Field. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Karen. Okay, I think I'll wrap up the public comment part. Oh, no, one more popped up. Jerry Welch. Jerry, are you there?
Sorry, I started speaking and the unmute didn't go off. In deference to time, I just want to say I agree with so many of the very thoughtful comments this evening, especially from the members of the committee and all the time you've given. And the comments by the residents have been thoughtful and professional, and I appreciate that. I agree with the concerns on the upzoning. And I also feel that Ford Field, I agree with the last caller, that we need to look into that and be more sensitive to those that have given to our town and made the ambiance that we all moved here for. I did want to mention that if you would like to look up what Woodside draft was approved and already being sent in, according to an almanac article from May 17, the arena allocation was 328. They did go with a 20% buffer, and I want to make one quick comment about that. And they went with 25 a year for a total, believe it or not, of 200 ADUs. They also went with majority of buildings. They have something that we don't have. They have Kenyatta College, and they were able to get 80 housing units additional up at Kenyatta. So that makes it a little easier for them. They also are building on town land. So, but it's more complex than that, so you take a look, but ADUs, 25 a year. I did, at the very end of the last meeting, one of your committee members was talking about starting at the 15% buffer level and was overridden by another voice and then brought it up a second time, and I was so excited to hear that. I think it is reasonable to start at 15%. If they don't accept us, we, of course, can go up. But, you know, why pay $20 extra for something that's on sale? And thank you again for all the work you're doing. We are in an impossible situation. But one important thing is, things change. Nothing remains the same, even government. So don't lock us into anything we can't get out of. Thank you very much again.
Thanks, Jerry. Great. Now we'll wrap up public comments. And I guess, Laura, I think I'll turn it over to you to answer the questions that you're able to answer now.
Yeah, there weren't a lot of questions. It was mostly comments, so let me just kind of work through my list a little bit. So a lot of people are talking about the opt-in and the potential cap, and I just wanted to make sure everyone understands that we intend to do something like that. The form and the shape is not known yet. It hasn't been developed. So if that stays in the, you know, in the housing program, then we would be looking to feedback or feedback on how to construct that, and then the technical team would work on that. There was a comment about the ADU and the three-year formula being obsolete because of COVID. This argument has been made with HCD, and they did not accept the argument. Because, and I think it's probably true for us, our numbers rebounded after COVID. So people who didn't make application in 2020 have been making applications in 2021 and this year in 2022. So they're willing to, you know, adjust a little bit, but they have already made a determination that just because of COVID doesn't throw out that rule that they've set forward. There's a question about affiliated housing and what happens if someone leaves. And that's a good question that would need to be set forward in the program. In general, if you qualify for the affordable housing in a typical affordable housing scenario, if you meet the income criteria, you're allowed to stay. And so this is a unique program that we have in town for affiliated housing. So adapting it to more sites would require thought on these kinds of details and what would happen. So it's not determined yet, but certainly the intention is not to have people, you know, lose stable housing, even if they change employment, but we need to think that through more. There's a question about HOAs, and it's my opinion that the HOA laws are evolving. And so at this time, HOAs cannot prohibit ADUs, but they can prohibit certain SB9 actions, and they would be able to prohibit probably our upzoning, depending on how it's structured, the opt-in upzoning program, certain HOAs would be able to prohibit it. We don't know if future laws are going to come into place that restrict or limit HOA's ability to stop housing projects from going forward. I think that that is possible. We've seen that trend. But at this time, HOAs would be able to keep some of these projects from happening in certain places. So there was a question of like, could that lead to a concentration in other places? Yes, I think that is possible. And so people would need to be aware of that, that that is a possible, you know, path that this could take. But we also want to think about, like, the lot size criteria that's written in right now, is it one acre? And so that does eliminate quite a few properties in town that are less than one acre, that are in some of the older, more closely developed areas. There's a question about what's the legal definition of multifamily? And this is one of those, well, it kind of depends on who you ask and what you're asking for. Most local zoning codes have a definition of multifamily because they have multifamily in their town. So most cities have that definition. Small towns like us don't necessarily because we don't have that zoning district. We would have to create a definition of multifamily moving forward. And the next question was about ADUs and JADUs, and do they count as multifamily? And the answer to that, in my opinion, is pretty clear in the state law, in that they don't. The state law now says a single-family use, a regular single-family home, includes an ADU and a JADU, and that is part and parcel to what a single-family home is. So just because something has an ADU and a JADU doesn't make it multifamily in terms of how the state law looks at it and how practicing planners look at it. And our code would need to be amended to reflect that with these changes. There's questions about geologic safety and what kind of investigations would be required for projects moving forward. And the answer to that is the same requirements that are in place today. Almost every project of significant size is required to have geotechnical investigation. That is a report that is reviewed, peer-reviewed by the town geologist. So all new buildings would be required to do that. That often includes significant yield verification. It could include digging trenches. So the same rules that we have in place today would apply in the future. Nobody's proposing to change the rules about our geologic safety map or the process that people go through. There's a question about Ford Field and density bonus, and the commenter used some of the language from the law, so thank you for the chance to just make sure people are clear on that. For the Ford Field site in particular, the reason that density bonus would not have to apply there is because the town owns the property. And as the property owner, the town would be looking for an affordable housing developer to partner with, and we would specify to them the number of units that we wanted to build and the parameters of that development. So setback and height and parking and all those things would be a conversation with them. But we are not entitled to use the density bonus on a property that we own unless we wish to. And I'm speaking "we" as in terms of the town. Then there's a question about the comments tonight, and how are the comments going to be addressed? So the comments that the Planning Commission received for this meeting are the comments that have come in from the time we released the draft housing element until today. So there's a handful, a dozen or so comments that you've received. And what we're going to be doing is we're going to be keeping track of all of the comments for the 30-day time period. And then we'll present those to the different bodies that are reviewing it along the way. And then all of those comments will go to the town council, so that the town council has the benefit of everyone's comments from the public. We'll have, so the set of public comments will all go together, and then we'll have our normal system of kind of transmitting the Planning Commission's feedback up to the town council. And Sheriff Copsill and I have already talked about this, and we are going to collaborate on that to make sure that we've, you know, staff has generated the summary that the Planning Commission feels comfortable with. And then we'll have final recommendations from the Ad Hoc Housing Element Committee. We'll do the same thing. Staff will collaborate with them on their comments, and then the council will get everything. And then we, the staff and consultant team, will prepare kind of like a memo with like a response to comments, not super detailed like we would do for an EIR, but a little bit more general, so that everyone could have all the comments together and could see like a memo with how the comments were integrated and how they were considered. So that's the future steps for the comments. And that's all I've got for questions.
Laura, do you have any, or Cara, do you have anything about the Ford Field being donated open space? But how is it still eligible for a housing site?
Right, thank you. So the whole history of Ford Field was evaluated in connection with the
You're breaking up for me.
Property Committee, the last, okay, yes, so my, yeah, my internet is a little bit unstable right now. Hopefully you can hear me. The Ford Field ownership was Site Committee. It was an ad hoc committee formed by the town council in connection with the previous housing element cycle. And the ownership of Ford Field and the title was researched in connection with that. My understanding is that there is no open space deed restriction in connection with the grant deed to that property. However, there is a state deed restriction that was placed on a portion of the property as a condition of developing the property as a soccer field and taking some state grant money to do that. I would think that if the property were, you know, granted in, as in, contained a formal deed restriction in the grant deed that the Ford Field project and the parking lot could not have gone forward, as that typically is not considered an open space use. So, but we can, we can look into that history a little bit more. Also, I just wanted to mention, there was a question that came up about the Moritz map and whether that was going to be adopted for this current cycle. What I had said was that the town council has already adopted the Moritz map and the report in connection with the safety element. So the action that was taken on that was on July 28, 2010, when the town council amended the safety element to include both the Moritz report and the Moritz map. And then finally, there was a comment about the safety element. We've heard this from many people, and and I think that Laura did a very good job explaining why we could not update the safety element before we updated the housing element. It's always a chicken or egg issue, and unfortunately, we don't have the mapping data to finalize the safety element. But we are in the process of getting that mapping data, and as soon as it's obtained, if we believe that further amendments to the housing element are needed, we're always able to do that. The town council is able to amend the safety element, or the housing element at any time, but there is a legal mandate to to adopt the housing element by a particular date. But there is a legal mandate to um to adopt the housing element by a particular date, as Laura mentioned. And if we don't do that, we do lose some significant local control as well as. Um, run the risk of of penalties and enforcement action and and we don't um think it would be wise to put the town in that. Uh, legal risk. Thank you.
Thanks. Shall we bring it back to the commission for discussion and thoughts on this? This is kind of the section six, um, and we'll take up the other section, um. Oh, I'm expecting to end this meeting at ten thirty, so we'll go get as far as we can, but. How about if we um bring it to the commission for discussion on the things we've. Uh, been brought up tonight? Anyone want to start?
Sure.
You did great, thanks.
So. Uh, on a preliminary basis. I know how much effort you, Nicholas, and all the committee members and staff have put into all of this. There's been an amazing amount of information. You've been very flexible. I've not been as integrated into that process and it is a bit overwhelming. To, well, I'm sure the pivots that have been taken were taken with good reason. I tried to go back and follow that good reason by pulling up the minutes. From the most recent meetings and because of the change in town policy. From going from detailed minutes, which I usually find very helpful. It's much quicker to read minutes than it is to listen to a five hour. Zoom recording where I don't know when the information is going to turn up. I was very disappointed that between February and uh April. Um, the the change had been made and that's the information I wanted. So I I need that to be noted. I do not feel as if I've been fully informed. Uh, and between now and the next meeting, which I do think personally we need. Um, I will do my best to get up to speed. Um, but that that is a concern of mine. I do want to note the um. Couple of things on the specific sites, um. It would be very important to me to understand the legal treatment of the uh Ford Field. Um, I'm sure there is more information that can be shared. But it goes in two different directions. One is, is there actual legal impediment? Um, that that's important to know. The other is certainly there's. You know, I didn't understand the donation history there and um. And, you know, those those two trees are fairly iconic uh symbols of the town. So I do think it's very important to get more information on that. And to step back and think. What's appropriate there? Um. Okay, next, um. On the site, uh, and in full disclosure, I live near the Nat Horse uh Triangle area, so. Um, that, from my understanding, does not preclude me from being able to comment. Uh, the the there, the one that's right on Nat Horse. My understanding is that the parking lot would come off into Nat Horse. And it's a fairly short distance in, but Nat Horse is essentially a cul-de-sac. It's cut off. And I am concerned about some um. Traffic uh issues there if there were to be a fire situation. That might just need me to understand the potential layout or solutions for that. But but it does occur to me that, you know, Nat Horse looks like it's a pass through and it's actually cut off at one end. I do not like the opt-in zoning. Don't think it's a good thing for all the reasons people have said. Um, I do commend everyone for being creative about trying to solve. But the the more specific issue that I have is SB nine. You know, from my point of view, while getting it a good goal does it. An ineffective way and and it takes away local zoning control. That's been done by the state. It is what it is. From my point of view, the upzoning. Takes an organized zoning process and disperses it randomly. Now that I learned that maybe HOAs can impede, you know, where these things are. I just think that it's not good for public policy to have the random impact on neighboring properties. And I do think there's a difference between SB nine, which it has a certain subdivision plan. And being able to do even more. A number of smaller units with, you know, a a parking garage in the back. I think we really should stop and think before we do something like that. It's one thing the state imposed it on us. But for us to be, you know, admirably creative about trying to solve for what we need to do. I think that goes too far from my comfort level. And I'm not sure that I will understand the ramifications of that uh well enough in a short timeframe. Um, it may be that that's something to consider going forward, um, but not in a tight timeframe where we're. Try, it could have a huge impact that I would want to understand much more. Um, trying to get to the end here and be efficient, um. The other comments, uh, I think I've covered most of them. I do think that the density bonus not being. There's two things about the density bonus. Um, if the town owns Ford Field. And can decide not to grant the density bonus, will it? There's nothing here preventing the town from deciding to do that. And I think the public would want to know that. What is the worst case scenario on each of these properties? I feel like the density bonus actually should be disclosed and discussed. Um, more clearly than it, at least I understood it. But again, I'm I'm catching up to where you all are on that. Uh, because planning for three hundred or, you know, two fifty-three to three hundred. Is a very different thing than planning, you know, with the density bonus numbers from. My point of view, uh, but again, you know, if I saw numbers, maybe I could be convinced otherwise. Uh, and the last one is the the equestrian facilities on Glen Oaks. Um, there were late-breaking comments that we received forty minutes before this meeting. That addressed this and and I think a few folks online um raised this. But if that site is used, that will be two different equestrian facilities located near each other. That are no longer available and and Glen Oaks does train, you know, small children and introduces people to the whole equestrian lifestyle. And I I do think that's a consideration more from a public, um, you know, values perspective. And um, uh, recreational use perspective. And if the uh, the the lessee was surprised by all of this, that's also greatly concerning to me. So um I have those concerns. Um, I think the affiliated housing is um coming along very nicely. I I think those programs are going to be valuable. And the JADUs, I think, you know, more thought around that, more more clarity about process. I think those could really be valuable uh to help solve the housing issues that we've got. And I'd love to see more support, more affirmative support for getting those done. So I'll stop there.
Hey, thank you, Judith. Craig, you want to go next?
Thank you. Um, yeah, so I I obviously a lot of work went into this and and a lot of really good work, um. I'm completely with Judith that, you know, although the upzoning, I think, is a very creative idea. And I can e- even imagine how people sort of backed into it because there's this notion of overlays. And and do you want to do an overlay in a particular area? And then, of course, you don't want those people to feel disadvantaged, so then you make it voluntary, so we spread it out and then only the people who want it. But but I have to agree with the public and just in general, I mean, this definitely um seems. Like, I mean, in no uncertain terms, I guess, a really terrible idea. Um, I just see it as something that. Trying to limit the numbers, if it, you know, a- as one of the um public commentators said. I mean, you're talking millions of dollars, so who do we decide who gets the millions of dollars of bonus? And so why don't you just, I mean, why doesn't every lot in Portola Valley just decide to upzone? Because, you know, now I can sell my lot and say, well, you can build four houses here. And that's clearly more valuable than a lot that can only have one. So it's just, you know, it just seems wrong to me in so many different ways, um, that I I don't, yeah, I don't even think we should entertain it. Like, Judith, I think you were a little bit too soft and like, maybe we should think it through and it's a little bit, but I think it's like, it should just be. I mean, this is just, and especially, I mean, if somehow we were getting half our housing from it, it's really somehow had a meaningful impact, but it's twelve. I mean, I would say add twelve to that ADU count and, you know, let the HCD, you know, let's fight with HCD over the last twelve. Because, I mean, that's just, in my mind, way too big bang. So when Cleese wasn't clear, I I really opposed upzoning. Um, then moving on, um, I I'd like to see us do some more, have some more thought around this notion of sunrise clause. Is to basically build the proposal more around ADUs and JADUs. With some automatic triggers that say, you know, if we don't meet our run rate. Then there's some serious consequences, because I I totally understand ATD is going to want to see that if we don't meet it, there's going to be some way we're going to catch up. Um, but I also think that that it's behoven on us to, you know, have a public marketing campaign to get out there and get the JADUs and the ADUs in place. If that's what we think is going to preserve the important characteristics of the town. So I I guess I'd really like to push this idea of the, you know, again, the sun, I put it in quotes. But this notion of some kind of sunrise clause to build this stuff in. So I applaud that there's some of it already. I I think we should double down on that. The next thing was, um. I kind of want to take issue with the the twenty percent, even the fifteen percent. Because it is I understood what it means is it's there because somehow housing stock is going to disappear. And so you need to make sure that you do this other stuff to make up for the fact that housing stock disappeared. In Portola Valley, we're talking about lots that are worth millions of dollars. It's hard to really imagine that somebody's going to say, oh, yeah, I bought this lot, tore the house down and then decided for eight years. Just to leave my two million dollars sitting there on the ground. I I, so I don't really understand where, wh- why you need, I mean, anything but, I don't know, a five percent cushion. Given how expensive property is here, it just doesn't seem reasonable to me that housing stock is going to disappear in numbers like that. So so I don't know. I mean, you know, maybe at some point Laura, you and I can talk, but. The fifth, the twenty percent just seems extremely high to me for something that feels like it ought to be close to zero. So at a minimum, I'd like to see us push it to fifteen, but maybe even lower. Um, so unless HCD's got some compelling reason to say it's got to be ten percent or twenty percent because of X. But other than that, it strikes me as a guideline and it doesn't fit very well for us. I mean, I can understand other places where you tear down housing and maybe you put up an office park or something. But that's not going to happen here. So again, I don't quite understand where where those numbers are coming from, um. I appreciated some of the comments on making sure that whatever we do in the housing element, we don't create a sort of. Overbuilt concept where it just runs wild. Um, obviously, the upzoning is one of those consequences where it it just has no end on it. Um, I think Judith was getting at a little bit on the bone, the um. Density, the density bonus, um, and, you know, I think we should be pretty careful. I it it's, we want to hit our numbers. We don't want to somehow magically have put policies in place that let us hit, you know, our numbers times two. That's just seems like craziness. So I guess I'd like to be really careful on that. And then the last thing is, you know, I'd really like to look at, you know, Woodside and Atherton and Los Altos Hills. Because my understanding is their ADU numbers are more like fifty percent. Um, so, you know, I I don't understand quite how their numbers are going to be that high and ours aren't. Um, so, because because I really do think that that, you know, again, the ADUs, the JADUs are the best chance we have for maintaining the values that we care about. Um, and I think we've got to be real careful when we start getting into using up open space or what people perceive as open space. Um, for good cause. I mean, I I accept that, but that feels like a slippery slope. I don't know, you know, once. You take one open space for something, then, you know, why not another, you know, wh- why don't we use, you know, the stuff by town center and make that all housing? I mean, it just, I I don't know where you stop that process once you start down that path. So again, maybe Ford Field's a different thing, but but I'd like to see us be very, very thoughtful about using. Again, I'll say perceived open space because I don't know its exact um designation, but I do think we need to be careful. Um, I think that's it. Thanks for tonight. Thank you.
Great. Okay, Nicholas?
Uh, thanks very much. Uh, I think that the points that have been made are are really good ones. I think that I just want to start by noting that we need to figure out the story and the legal status of Ford Field. And it is, uh, if, 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 if in fact it is a gift to be kept in open space. Uh, on many levels, we need to honor that. Uh, the other element that I think. Fisher Taylor was just getting at is that we really have an iconic gateway to Portola Valley. Uh, in the form of that truly majestic oak, uh, if, uh. We we should think long and hard uh about how to maintain uh our uh our gateway. I, if this state is telling us that that's what we need to do and we can't address it another way. Uh, I'm saying this uh as a person who's spent many, many, many hours. Uh, not as many uh as the planning director, uh admittedly. Uh, but uh with uh Chair Copsill, um. I think that it is, it is an element that we really need to think very carefully about. And I think about ways of, uh. Whether that may be a sunrise element, if in fact it is an option, uh, at all. Uh, the uh opt-in uh probably needs to be given some additional thought potentially. As a uh, as a sunrise, uh, but certainly with some, um. Uh, some downs put around it, uh, both in terms of uh caps. And in terms of decision-making as to. Who who may win that lottery ticket if that's how you want to think about it. The town may have some discretion uh there. Uh, and if that's what's need be to make our numbers, uh, I'm not ready to take it off the table. Uh, altogether, but I think it probably needs some uh further uh attention. Um, uh, I would recommend that we evaluate our numbers with the inclusion of JADUs. And uh, being informed by what some of our sister uh towns. Uh, Los Altos Hills, uh, Atherton, uh, Woodside, Hillsborough, the like. How they are treating it, uh, and also as I discussed before, uh, the uh allocation. Uh, within, um. Uh, within the different uh buckets of affordability. Um, I'm not prepared to fully move away from uh what we had before without better understanding. Uh, the problems that were represented by, by twenty-one elements uh in the county put forward. Uh, before, um, only close that I am uh still. Uh, concerned about not understanding the ripple effect through the general plan. Uh, and if we have a uh basis to decide that we are going to move forward. Uh, with the initial study. with the initial study, and that goes to the issue of consistency and the ripple. I'd like to see that. I'd like to stand it. I'd like to have that talked through so that we know what it is in a fulsome way that we, that we're buying. My preference, my strong preference is that we do that before we move forward by providing a draft to our friends at HCD. People tend to get wedded to what they see. And we're going to find ourselves quite jammed up after HCD takes their time during their initial review. If they find that we are unhappy with what that ripple might look like and might want to make some further amendments, that's going to be both more than a little bit awkward in our relationship with HCD and the conversations that will take place as well as bring the issue back to, to the planning commission and to council. Unless we have a pretty good census to what those implications are going to be. That's what I've got.
Great. Thanks, Nicholas. And then for me, I have been a member of the Housing Element Committee. So spent a lot of time going through all the iterations and up and down. But just overall, I feel like it's a good compromise. What I like that we spread it around, I mean, not perfectly all over town, but about as good as you could do, given all the fire and slope constraints. I'm really glad we kept the commercial, current commercial businesses intact. I am a big fan of multi-use and I love the idea of kind of apartments over top, some of the businesses and hardware store, but it just didn't seem like those could be built without interrupting the businesses too much. So we took those out and I think that's good. Nobody wanted to see anything happen to the businesses. I'm glad we did the more net horse light. Some other versions had higher density there. You know, the lots are flat, they're near the roads, exit roads, so they're tempting. But I think this is good. I love the affiliated housing changes. I've always liked affiliated housing, but been uncomfortable that the detractors call it, you know, indentured servitude, people. Housing and works all too tied together. So I like these changes. I'm glad we put the higher number for ADUs. And I just like to caution people that want to study what other towns did. I always want to study what other towns did and I think it's interesting. But, you know, the mayor of Atherton all but said their plan isn't, he doesn't think it's going to get accepted. So just because people put it into their submission, it doesn't mean it was a good idea or they're not saving their hard work, hard problem for later. Okay, now at the risk of getting eggs thrown at me, I actually don't want to give up on the upzoning yet. I heard all the comments and know people are uncomfortable. Let me just make a plea for the opposite side. I have, I know a lot of people that would like to live in those kind of units. I feel like it's a missing middle, right? That people would like to downsize, maybe live kind of with other people a little bit. But, you know, an ADU doesn't work on their property or, you know, you still own the big house and you got to fix the roof. So they like the idea of, you know, four little cottages on a lot that they would move to from their big house in Portola Valley. I wish we could make, or I'd like to keep studying those rules such that we make it that, you know, there's four small units that are kind of very similar in size to what a single big house could be. Cause then I think the financial incentive to do that, there won't be a lot of people wanting to do it. And, you know, as evidenced by SB9, if, you know, building two houses was a lot more valuable than one house, if we all would have run out and done the SB9 splitter, got our name on the list, and that's not the case. The single houses are a lot more valuable than small houses sadly contributes to the housing problem. But anyhow, I'd like to keep looking at the upzoning, keeping it on the table, but really be, you know, put constraints so that the things that get built don't feel like bigger, more massive or more objectionable than the houses that can get built right now. And then my, you know, there's just been many, many ups and downs on, are we going to ever get a housing element? And how are we going to do this? I actually can live with this. I feel like I'm going to, you know, continue to love the town when these things get built. And the only thing I just feel sick about, I mean, just truly heart sick is the gorgeous, beautiful, fantastic oak tree that's on Ford Field. And I'm afraid it most likely has to go with the 50 unit. So that's the one negative, but you know, I don't have another solution. So I think this is the best when you put all the constraints together. Okay. So why don't we wrap up this part now and then we'll continue on June 29th, which is two weeks. Laura, will, this is the most important or big section, I'd say. Shall we start with it next time? And then we also wanted to go over, the next one was the programs. Is that right?
Yeah, we want to make sure we have a chance to spend some time on programs next time.
So let's do this section, the sites inventory, wrap that up completely, then do seven. And then if there's time before 10:30, go over all the other sections. So if everybody, if the planning, if the commissioners could review those sections on their own and have tidy comments for that.
Yeah. If I could through the chair to go back to Commissioners Taylor's comments about the sunrise concept, as we're calling it. I didn't hear from your statement, what you think should be included first and what should sunrise? Like I didn't understand that from your comments. Did you kind of get that far in your thinking or are you still thinking about that?
Um, so I guess I'm flexible. So I'm not, I don't have some hard and fast idea. But I think for some of the things that are less appealing, I guess I'd rather see a higher, you know, ADU, JADU numbers with sunrise clauses. I mean, a little bit like Nicholas was saying, like, you know, maybe we consider Ford Field as a sunrise clause rather than as a sort of guaranteed part of what we're doing. And if we can fill in with ADUs, then we don't need to cut the oak tree down. And if we can't, then it becomes part, part of the plan. You know, that's this kind of thing that I had in mind. I mean, and you could, you could slot in, you know, any number of these things in there. But I guess I'd like to see us be as aggressive as we can on the ADUs. And I understand Anne's point that, you know, maybe Atherton thinks they're going to get rejected. But I also think if you don't ask, I guarantee you won't get it. So I'd rather ask with some kind of, you know, these sunrise things behind it and have them come back and say, well, all right, that number's a little too high, but drop that down and keep these sunrise clauses and we could live with that. That's sort of what I had in mind. I mean, you know, obviously this is a negotiation with HCD because it's a judgment call kind of ultimately on their part when they review the plan that we give. So does that help answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. I think a couple of follow-ups. We had this discussion in quite a bit of depth at the last Housing Element Committee. And I personally, I don't think it's a negotiation with HCD. HCD is our regulator. So the example I gave last time is if you come to the Planning and Building Department and want to build 1,000 square feet and the rule says 500 square feet and you ask for 1,000, my staff is going to say no.
Sure.
But if you come in and say, oh, but you know, the area under my staircase doesn't count. It's 504 and we can take out four square feet. That's an interpretation, but it's not a negotiation.
Fine. But when you have a number like 15 to 30% over the numbers you need to do, call it interpretation, call it negotiation, but somebody's making a judgment call there because that's a big, that's a big range, you know? It's not in law that you have to add 20%. So I don't know, I hear what you're saying, but I also feel like we're mincing words. I'm, you're trying to be formal and precise and I appreciate that because you're a planning person and I'm not. But I guess what I'm after is whether 10% is good enough or 30% is good enough. Somebody at HCD is making that judgment. It's not because it's a law. Am I missing it?
No, in that particular case, that's true. Some of these things are in the law and some of these things are in the guidelines. And some of these things we learned because of all the comment letters they gave to other cities in Southern California. So it's all three things are happening. There's law, there's guidelines, and then there's experience, best practice from other places.
Right. And so I guess what I'm after is, I mean, obviously for the things that they've already sort of ruled on by providing, you know, a letter saying, okay, this doesn't fly, I get where you're coming from. But I also think if you say, we want to do something similar, but we have a sunrise clause to go with it, I think that's potentially a very different thing. So, so that's what I say. I mean, it feels like at the end of the day, you know, we're going to give them a housing element, they're going to look at all the pieces and how they interact. And we're going to make a case for why we think our housing element is the right one for both our, our town and for the state and what the state's trying to accomplish. So, yeah, anyway, that's, that's kind of my thinking. And I have a question for you since I'm speaking and I'm unmuted. How are all these comments going to get wrapped up? Are you, are you and Laura going to try to do that before the next meeting and we're going to read that? Or are we going to have another meeting after the 29th where we get sort of, here's a proposal? And then we get to sort of go through and discuss whether we kind of captured the essence? And what, what was your thinking?
No, I'm thinking next meeting, everybody will give very concise comments. If we can find consensus, I'll say that at the meeting and we'll agree on that. If not, it'll be separate comments, but then offline, Laura and I will write up the notes that go to the town council for their consideration.
Okay. I mean, that, that seems a little fraught with, I mean, normally what we've done in the past is either we just give them detailed minutes from our meeting and we let the council members read them and interpret each of the commissioner's opinions from the minutes. Or we write something up and then it comes back to the commission, the commission sort of reviews it and then we pass it on. It feels like you, the two of you, and not that I have anything against the two of you, it's just like having the two of you write it up. I know if it was even, you know, if, if I was doing it with Laura, if I was doing it with you, I just don't feel like I'd be comfortable saying, and this is what the other commissioner said, without at least having them look at it and say, yeah, you captured the essence of what I was trying to say.
Um, yeah, let's see how, I feel like if people's comments are concise and easy to follow in just a few bullet points, it will be no trouble. If it's long and nuanced, then yeah, I can review things with you. Let's see how it is.
Okay.
Shall we move on to the approving the minutes from the last meeting?
I'd like to build on that point. And that is, I think that we have some opportunity over the next two weeks to try and get things as right as they can be and to figure out what the sunrise looks like when we meet next. And it may be appropriate to have a subcommittee work with the planning director to try and create a little package to come back that would be, would be helpful.
You know, the Housing Element Committee works on this too, and they're meeting Monday. Maybe you could, well, you'll listen there Nicholas, but maybe Craig could come, but it could be discussed with them. I feel like the planning commission is only one body that gives input to the town council, but not the final or only body.
Respectfully, we're the planning commission and the recommendations come to us and our recommendations go to council. As, as a member of that body, I respect what they've done. Now, I don't mean to diminish in any way the excellent work of their staff or of, or of the body in which I serve, any of them ever. But it, it is, it is this, it is this group. And if the ad hoc committee wants to make recommendations further to this group for us to make, to pass on to the, to the council, I think that that's fabulous. But we have a, we have a very certain role to play as different than the ad hoc committee.
Through the chair, why don't we take this discussion to the ad hoc committee meeting on the 20th? Your, your recommendations and suggestions and let them respond to it and let that committee think it through in light of everything that they have thought about for the last eight months.
I think that that's great, but it is our job to make a recommendation to council. And I think it'd be useful to synthesize a position, if we can, going into the next meeting to try and actually reach a, a nice crisp decision to, to provide to, to provide to council rather than to have a fractured planning commission and a less than clear outcome from the ad hoc Housing Element Committee. So I think it's fine if we want to take a whack at it next week as the ad hoc committee. But I do think that this planning commission has a very distinct and different role. And we will be the ones to make recommendations to council.
I'm fine appointing a subcommittee if two of you want to work on it and brings a proposal back to our meeting in two weeks. But I would need volunteers.
And the subcommittee is going to do, try to summarize tonight? Is that the idea?
No, no, no. Tried to come up with a more thought out idea on this sunrise. But I am uncomfortable with it not going and being part of the Housing Element Committee.
I think it'd be great if the Housing Element Committee could think about it for this coming, for this coming meeting. I think that would be great. And I don't think that we need to take any action on this until Tuesday of next week, at which time, or even Wednesday, at which time we can.
Monday is the Housing Element meeting. Is that what you're trying to talk about?
Exactly. So how's the element, whack at it on Monday would be fabulous if, whatever the subcommittee, there was that, yep, this is what we want to do. And then we can come back and present it to the planning commissioner, the planning director again. If that isn't the case, then there's an opportunity to provide something crisp to this body. Through work with the planning director and a couple of volunteers.
So I'm fine.
A little unclear on the role. I'm sorry. Can somebody restate?
Me too.
The proposal that I would make is that the ad hoc committee need recognizing that, so with the feedback that we have and the direction that we're going with the sunrise opportunity and a different calibration, maybe on a couple of dimensions on ADUs and JADUs. Recognizing that we may have an issue with Ford Field. That needs to get ironed out, I think, really lickety-split. Certainly for the Ford family, that needs to be understood to. Uh, certainly for the Ford family, that needs to be understood to to check this, uh, to uh, let's make sure that we're on the right side. Uh, and, uh, I and then to figure out what this, uh, what is in this, uh, opt-in, um, excuse me, what is in the, uh, uh, what is in the sunrise, maybe opted, um, maybe some additional incentives for ADUs. Um, yeah, I I I might have views on this, but, uh, yeah, I can be persuaded.
So goes to the ad hoc committee Monday, they talk. Then what happens?
Then presumably we have a little subcommittee that
Okay.
that thinks about it and said, yeah, they got it right. We like that. We can get behind it. Then we bring it back to, uh, the Planning Commission when we get back together on the twenty ninth. Or if we look at it and say, you know, there's a lack of clarity on what the ad hoc committee said, or it doesn't resolve the issues as the planning commission saw it. And we work on whittling it and balancing it in a way that, uh, we think that we could support to the council. Explain whatever differences there are. The council has to do whatever it is that the council wants to do because of the capital. And, uh, and that's the, uh, that's the, that's the, that's the process I'm suggesting. And is one basically, uh, of trying to make sure that we have some alignment. And if we don't have alignment, being able to explain this clearly as we can.
And the subcommittee you're proposing is going to be out of the ad hoc Housing Element Committee or out of the Planning Commission?
Uh, it would be out of the, uh, Planning Commission. And, uh, Chair, if you were on it, then it would be both a representative of the planning commission and of the, uh, uh, ad hoc committee. I only, uh,
I would definitely suggest you fill that role on the subcommittee.
But you're a part. So that's it. So in any event, that's, that's what I'm suggesting.
Just push it a little bit farther to be clearer for the next meeting substantive meeting that we have.
That's right. And I think it'd be great. And I think it's entirely appropriate for the ad hoc committee, uh, to have the first crack at it.
Yeah, yeah.
These things where everybody there has put in a tremendous amount of, or again, not as much as our consultants or our, uh, planning staff and director.
Okay, good. So our next steps, we'll bring it up to the, um, ad hoc meeting, which is Monday. If they like it or want to pursue more, then all by email, can I ask for a subcommittee or could we appoint it right now?
I think we do it right now.
Yeah, if you're going to create a subcommittee, you should do it now as part of the public meeting.
Okay. Do we have volunteers? Can I think Craig and Nicholas would like to do it?
I mean, like is a strong, strong word here, but but I think that's, I mean, I think having either you or Nicholas on it as you have the history. Um, and and I'm willing to join in and and see if we can try to refine this.
Be great. Good. Nicholas, I'm looking to you.
If, uh, yeah, the guy who raises their hand first and can't put it down, then yes, I I would, I would be pleased to serve. I appreciate the opportunity.
Very good. Okay. Good. So we have a subcommittee of Craig and Nicholas that will take input or feedback from the Housing Element Committee, think through the sunrise, um, idea. And then bring a proposal or a little more thought out ideas to the Planning Commission meeting on Janu- June twenty ninth. We'll discuss it as a group and decide if we want to put that in our, uh, info that we send on to the town council.
Sounds right to me.
Perfect.
Okay. Great.
And then
Anything else on Housing Element Logistics?
Yes, I just wanted to to finish up on that. I mean, this sort of sunrise stuff was sort of one element, but choosing the twenty percent versus the fifteen percent. Yep. Where are we going to just like as individual commissioners sort of going to state our view and you're going to pass that on? Or we as a commission going to try to sort of sort it out? Uh, that's the stuff I was trying to get at a little bit, which was, you know, there's a lot of things we've talked about here and and I don't know exactly how we're going to get them to the council.
You know, so this is where I'm uncomfortable. The Housing Element Committee spent a lot of time discussing the buffer and deciding what to do. And came up and, you know, not everybody agreed, but came up with a consensus of twenty percent. I feel like now us reviewing it and saying, oh, well, we're the planning commission, so we know better, uh, we can put our stamp on it. I I I don't feel like we have that much to add over what the housing elements already thought through on that topic.
I mean, with respect, I've never had any input here and I would like to have some input. I don't disagree that that people have thought about this long and hard and I I I really want to hear why. Um, but we, we need to make a recommendation and I don't know what I want to make yet. So I think it's a valid question for us to have a view on, hopefully informed as much as possible by those prior discussions if I can get through the tapes.
So I guess that's my question is how how do we, you know, how 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 do we envision getting at that? Uh, because I, I I totally appreciate your point. Um, but I also feel like I haven't heard a justification for twenty percent other than it feels like something HCD is comfortable with. And and that seems like, at least for me, given all the other things we're talking about. I mean, this is pretty consequential for it just to be, well, it just sort of seems like, you know what I mean? Uh, so I guess that's what I'm missing when we have to talk about this. I mean, ultimately, the council gets to make these decisions and I'm okay passing on to the council that some of the commissioners are uncomfortable with twenty percent and they could say, yeah, fine, whatever. I mean, that's, I mean, that's councils. I just on to that, so whether it's through minutes or through this sort of summary. And that's where I felt things felt different to me. In the past, it's just been, they read through our minutes and and they make their own decisions. But if we're going to come up with a summary, then all of a sudden, this summary is speaking for the commission. And and I guess I'd like, if if I'm going to be part of that, I'd like to know what that thing says. And have it be written and and passed on to the council without review. So that that was sort of what I I just, it's a process question, I think. I'm just trying to kind of sort through. So I'm not trying to belabor the meeting and I apologize because I know it's getting late. Um, but but you go, did you get the point I'm trying to get at?
Yeah, yeah. And I, we can definitely review it with everyone. Um, cool. Um, I guess, um, debating, uh, it sounds like Judith is going to listen to a lot of the Zoom calls of Zoom recordings from the Housing Element. So Craig, I guess that could be an option for you also. Um, it's a lot of time, of course.
Well, we don't have any option, Anne, based on the way the process is working. So, you know, there's no other solution. I'm not comfortable relying on a summary. I won't rely on a summary. Uh, I'd like to hear more context than those minutes provide. And it's so important, it is so consequential. A two pager won't do it. And then I've been left with no other option. So that's what I will do. So anyway, uh, are are we done with that? Or or do you, are you still trying to refine what it is that you're asking the Monday meeting to address? I I wasn't quite sure.
No, no, I think so. These are certain, I think the Monday meeting refined and we have our subcommittee and that really has to do with the sunrise concept. But then there was this broader thing of there's some summary of the commission that was going to go to the council, which is, I understood, it included everything that we've discussed. And and I was less comfortable with us not reviewing whatever that document is.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So if we can, if we can review that, um, and have a discussion, uh, I guess a meeting after the twenty ninth, maybe the next one after it, then we can, you know, we can have that and and do any final revisions on it and then pass it on to council.
Oh, does it have to be a meeting? I was thinking I'm going to send you a draft and you're going to edit it and send it back to me the next day.
I I don't think that's legal.
Yeah, we have to.
I don't think
We have to be thoughtful about the brownest.
Yeah.
Okay.
And and I would expect the public, you know, I mean, we've had a lot of really good public comment and, you know, I I value the citizens of Portola Valley because they, you know, they aren't thoughtful and, you know, they're, they're willing to be involved. So I think they should see what, where we've come out on this and be part of that discussion, even though I I know it's painful. It it just, all these things feel like they take twice as long as they should, but it it's just, it's just so consequential to the future. You know, it's the next at least eight years of Portola Valley, but it's it, to me, it feels like it's more like the next fifty years. Because we're starting to make some serious decisions, land use decisions, you know, um, and like Dana and some of the other people are getting that in it. We're, you know, we're encroaching on general plan territory here. And I understand why. I'm not saying that there's something wrong with that, but but I don't want to do this casually. Like, I'm sorry, if it takes an extra two weeks, then, you know, that seems like a pretty small price to pay.
But I May I make an alternative, uh, recommendation?
Oh, yeah, thanks, Karen.
Sure, shoot.
So, um, you can, you know, proceed with the subcommittee. I I like the idea of the of the sunrise, um, uh, proposal. I think it would help to have that further fleshed out. Hopefully, once it does come before this commission, you could get consensus on it. Um, and then at the next meeting, see if there are any other issues that you could get a consensus on. Uh, my sense is that that you won't have consensus on all of the issues. And to that extent, it would be helpful for the council to hear all of the different viewpoints on on those issues and the range of of viewpoints. Um, and so maybe while we have gone to the the summary minutes, maybe we do have the Zoom recording transcribed, um, for that particular meeting, since it's such an important meeting, and present, um, the consensus issues in maybe the form of a resolution to the council and then have the, um, transcript for the issues where there is not, uh, consensus or or three vote.
Oh, I like that. And then the the transcript, um, would be just the part where we, where each of the commissions kind of state there where they've landed and where they've come down. That part of the meeting. Oh, I like that a lot.
I think that's how, if I may, uh, I think that that's helpful. I don't actually understand why we don't have a resolution to the council. Uh, that's actually making an affirmative recommendation to adopt. Uh, perhaps with modification and perhaps with dissent. But I think that we actually get to, I think that there is, there should be something to vote on there.
Actually, Laura and I talked about that. Do you want to talk about that, Laura, the timing and?
We're, we're not adopting the housing element. We're just sending the draft to HCD.
That's right, but we'll have a resolution for them to, uh, to 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 transmit to HCD.
Yeah, I don't it, yeah, now that I think about it further, I think you can do this by a voice vote. You don't need a resolution because this is really a preliminary draft. Once you do recommend the final draft, um, to the council with the environmental document, then I presume that we would have a resolution.
That's, 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 that's certainly the case for the, for the draft. Unless what we're saying is staff can simply take a preliminary and provide to HCD without counsel.
Yeah, we actually legally can. None of these meetings are required.
Uh, in in
I could go rogue and just send the housing element to HCD tomorrow.
You should do what, do what
I might actually go rogue and send it to HCD tomorrow.
After this, I I I can understand why, how that could happen. But I would like to see if we can take a voice vote or uh, a roll call to make a recommendation to to counsel, assuming this is going to be reviewed by council to then go to HCD. And it is consequential.
Yeah, I think at the meeting, I'll entertain if you want to make, or if we can try to, um, come to a consensus on some of the topics and then we make a motion for that. But if it's very kind of dispersed and different opinions, I think we should just send those on rather than trying to coalesce, uh, each topic into a vote.
We end up with mashed potatoes. It's not
Throwing at the wall.
And I thought Cara's suggestion that we just do a transcript of that meeting. Um, or like you said, maybe just that section. Then we can pass that, you know, that can be, you know, here's where we came out on this and you can hear what each of us had to say. That, that seems like that saves you a lot of time and angst trying to interpret what we're all saying and
I agree. That's a lot better for me.
Yeah, so I I that seems like a pretty good sort of compromise. You, is that good for you, Nicholas?
No.
No?
I think that there are a bunch of, uh, points that end up getting balanced and compromised against each other. And I'm not okay doing certain things unless we do certain other things. And, uh,
Well, I I didn't mean one or the other. I meant do a transcript to that next meeting and then whatever resolution we're going to do a voice vote on. I mean, to do both of, but I think the transcripts lets them see to sort of Judith's point, you kind of get the backstory behind sort of what you end up getting as a summer.
I'm completely good with that.
Yeah, okay.
And having a real, I I miss our transcripts, uh, uh, already. But, uh, uh, I I think that to the extent that we can, both that said, that's absolutely the right way to do it.
Sounds good. There's going to be pressure on us to be concise, so the transcript doesn't come out too long so that the town council really reads it.
Oh, I'm sure they read every word.
Every word, I'm sure. I know. Forty-five pages later, still reading. Um, shall we go on and, um, approve the minutes from the previous meeting? They're quite abbreviated, so it won't take too long.
So you have, you do have one hand up for public comment. I I know it can't be on the last thing because we closed public comment on the first item, but at least you ought to check and make sure they're not asking about the minutes.
Well, no, we're going to do the minute after we hear from the, um, commissioners.
We also, I think, continued, I'm so sorry, this through the chair, I believe that the chair continued that matter and we will, uh, take it up at the, uh, at at the meeting of the twenty ninth.
Is it a hearing? Do we have to continue it? I didn't think it was a hearing.
This is not a public hearing. You don't have to continue the hearing to any at using any language or or any formality. So I think we just, I think we agreed on the path forward. The next meeting is on the twenty ninth on this topic.
I'm unclear how that, uh, is okay, but I am okay with it.
We don't have to. It is not a public hearing.
Okay.
What that means is you get public comment, um, twice. So you will get pu- public comment on the twenty ninth as well.
Which is a good thing.
A good thing.
Okay, go ahead, Anne. Sorry, I didn't mean to
Yeah, so we're working on the minutes from, um, two weeks ago. It's only two pages because it's the abbreviated ones. Do any commissioners have, uh, comments to make on them?
Nope.
Craig, Nicholas?
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't there.
No, no comments, huh?
Now I'm going to open it up to public comments on the minutes. Dana, go ahead.
Not on the minutes, I'm sorry. My comment was to support all of you guys. Just say I, and as a member of the public, I want to hear from the planning commission. I've been to all the meetings. I've listened to hundreds of hours. I'm waiting now for you guys. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next, Christy Corley.
Thank you. In reading the minutes, I just felt it was so abbreviated that the public may want to hear what other residents verbally say. What other residents verbally say, because we have such bright residents that hit. Um, major points and regarding the housing. And I felt tonight's discussion uh, really allowed me to think in different directions. That I might not have thought of on my own, so the summary, if, if only thirty people were here. And say the other uh, three thousand people wanted to read the minutes. They wouldn't learn anything from the minutes, uh, from the public. So, and then in the last comment, you said you would summarize the, the uh, council's. Uh, comments, but not the public comments, so I guess as a public member. I like to hear all of your comments and then all of the public to really form my own opinion. And how, how I think about this community, so I just wanted to share that. If you all feel that you need the detailed minutes, couldn't you vote on that and ask for them back? That's just a suggestion, thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Okay, um, any more discussion on the minutes? We have a motion actually to approve these minutes.
Motion to approve minutes?
One second. Am I allowed to second him?
Yeah, you are allowed to second this chair.
I'll second him then. Any more discussion? Do we do a roll call for this?
Yes, please, Commissioner Haskell?
Aye.
Commissioner Tark?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
I will abstain.
Sheriff Koffsel?
Aye. Okay. Time to wrap up the meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so you guys, see everybody in two weeks, same place, same time.
Thank you, everybody, thanks for hanging in there, good night.
Bye.